We have the presence of a quorum attending on a video conference. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours. On March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID- nineteen. In accordance with those suspended rules, Fort Bend ISD certifies the following. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. This meeting is being held by video conference because the convening at one location of a quorum of the governmental body is not appropriate during the COVID- nineteen public health emergency. Based on current guidance from federal, state, and county authorities concerning large gatherings and social distancing during the COVID- nineteen public health emergency, there is no established location for an audience to observe the meeting. However, the live meeting is audible and accessible through a YouTube link that was timely and appropriately provided to the public and media as part of the meeting posting through a news release and via the district website. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the standard instructions for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be allowed three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio and video recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public on the district's website. First on the agenda this evening is our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Sarah Tossan and Matty Alfred, who are both seniors at Ridge Point High School. So if you would, please stand and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the text, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies. Please remain standing for a silent invocation. You may be seated. Thank you, Sarah and Matty. We appreciate you. So next on our agenda are recognitions. So I'd like to make a comment about this. Usually I pass the mic over to Dr. Dupree. And of course, we're in person and we have our teachers and students and staff who are being recognized walk in front of the dais and we shake their hand and congratulate them. Obviously, we are not doing that this evening, unfortunately, due to COVID- nineteen. We will not be able to shake your hand or congratulate you in person, but I would like for all of those being recognized this evening that on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we congratulate you. We're proud of you. Thank you for representing our district and congratulations. So with that being said, Mrs. Soper, will you take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Dupree, members of the board. I'm going to acknowledge three groups this evening and then I will be inviting Dr. Rodriguez and Mike Madden to also participate in recognition this evening. First, we have the Clements High School Concert Choral and their directors Janet Menzey and Ryan Bogner. And they were selected as one of only two mixed chorals to be selected to perform at the two thousand and twenty Texas Music Educators Association. So we're very proud of them. We recognize them. Big congratulations to Ms. Menzey and Mr. Bogner. Next, we're going to recognize Garcia Middle School Varsity Women's Choir and their directors, Kelsey Appleby, along with the Clements High School Choral Women and their directors, again, Ms. Janet Menzey and Ryan Bogner. They too were selected to perform for the Southwest Division of the American Choral Directors Association Convention, which is a phenomenal feat. So congratulations to them. I'd like to mention that Garcia Middle School was the only middle school choir chosen to perform. And Clements High School was one out of seven high school choirs chosen to perform across the entire southwestern United States. So huge congratulations to those group. Very excited for them. Moving on, we have Bobby Canet, who's a senior at Ridge Point High School. Placed second in the one hundred meter breaststroke and third in the one hundred meter freestyle at the state six A swimming and diving championship. So huge congratulations to Bonnie. We're very proud of Bobby. She did a phenomenal job and represented Ridge Point very well. So congratulations. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez for his recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Soper. On behalf of the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, I would like to recognize Dr. Danielle Jackson, TASP Region Four High School Assistant Principal of the Year and TASP State Assistant Principal of the Year. Dr. Danielle Jackson is a former assistant principal at Ridge Point High School and is now serving as associate principal at Thurgood Marshall High School. Dr. Jackson has distinguished herself as a leader among secondary school administrators in Texas. TASP will be presenting Dr. Jackson with a plaque for her willingness to take risks to help students, her ability to anticipate and solve problems, and her success in improving the school's learning environment. Dr. Jackson truly is living out the TASP motto, is above all, students first. On behalf of Archie McAfee, Executive Director of TASP and the organization, we congratulate the Texas Assistant of the Year, Dr. Danielle Jackson. Now I turn the program over to Mr. Mike Madden for the next recognition. Mr. Madden?
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Board President Burdine, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the senior-level cohort of the Student Leadership Program. The board has helped these students become partners for positive change in Fort Bend County by exposing them to leaders at the local, state, and federal levels while helping them to develop their leadership strengths. During their leadership one-on-two experience, these talented and committed students have worked diligently to support various nonprofit organizations within Fort Bend County, including Child Advocates, Fort Bend Women's Center, Parks Youth Ranch, the Literacy Council, and the Fort Bend Regional Council. Although the opportunity to meet with their nonprofits was interrupted by recent health events, many cohort members continue to meet virtually in an effort to support these organizations. The students have had the opportunity to explore and learn about themselves as leaders in new and dynamic ways and have exemplified the attributes of the profile of their graduate in their service. All cohort members will receive a certificate and a leadership cord in recognition of their successful completion of this program and contributions to our community. At this time, please help me recognize and congratulate the following senior members of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Student Leadership One-O-Two cohort. From Austin High School, Jacob Akers. Kylie Jackson. Ria Patel. Representing Bush High School, Arsalan Faruk. Emmanuel Ogu. And Nadia Said. Representing Clements High School. Shreya Chala. Kristev Ella. And Tricia Culcarney. Representing Dallas High School. Jasmine Aguilar. Arnav Garioli. And Yellen Lee. From Elkins High School. Sneha George. Representing Hightower High School, Isabella Ganderah. Christina Caravella. And Zane Moat. From Kipner High School. Sneha John. Aloisius Wazogi. And Cindy Trom. Representing Marshall High School. Suhab Adam. And Christian Wilson. Representing Ridge Point High School. Cassidy Lapp. Maria Sayara. And Sarah Tassan. Representing Travis High School. Isha Merchant. Haley Ryder. And Ally Whitting. And representing Willeridge High School. Thais Massias. And Estefany Marillo. Thank you very much, and I send it back over to you, Ms. Soper.
Thank you very much. A huge congratulations to all of our amazing students. And as a reminder, this PowerPoint that you saw will be available on our website so we can spend a little bit more time learning about our amazing students. This concludes our recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Soper. Once again, on behalf of the board, I wanted to say, great job. We are extremely proud of you. We thank you for representing our district, and I want to thank you all for your very hard work. With that being said, next on our agenda are our audience items. The board encourages and welcomes comments and input from our patrons, but we cannot respond, deliberate, or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the posted agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and please refrain from mentioning a student's or employee's name when voicing a concern or complaint as board policy provides alternative procedures through the grievance process. To seek resolution to complaints, the Superintendent's Office, Human Resources, and Administration in general can assist you in finding those procedures online. The following procedures will apply to tonight's audience items. I will read the name of the person registered to speak and share that they have three minutes to make their comments. Prior to speaking and in order to unmute their phone, the speaker must follow the prompts given to them by the Zoom program. Once the speaker starts his or her comments, Mr. Rozier, the board's recording secretary, will announce when they have thirty seconds remaining. And once the speaker has concluded his or her comments, Mr. Rozier will mute their phone line. We have one speaker this evening, and that's Congressman Pete Olson. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees. I'm so grateful for this time to speak to y'all this afternoon. I want to open with a heartfelt thank you for how you've handled the COVID- nineteen crisis. Y'all had some tough, tough choices and tough decisions. You canceled school first through March thirtieth, then April tenth, and then the entire spring semester with maybe some impact on the fall semester. You had to transition quickly to online classes. Graduation of our seniors had rescheduled them and worried about the fall. But through all that crisis and turmoil, you always put our kids first, and that is greatly appreciated. I want to put a subject on your radar that's not a federal issue. It's a local Fort Bend ISD issue. But forget, I'm a U.S. Congressman. A fair amount of people have asked me to weigh in, so I thought I'd like to know about their interests. Again, my comments are only as a Fort Bend County resident reeling information to my school board. I received a lot of online and social media traffic on naming a new FB ISD school. In my twelve years in Congress, this level activity's only come up once, the naming of the Anne McCormick Sullivan Elementary School. It's happening with the new high school off of FM five twenty-one near Heritage Ridge Elementary School, the one that's really the overcrowding at Ridge Point. The people who've contacted me want this twelfth high school named after Sotol Butcher. And while I'm one voice among many, I want to add my name in strong support of Sotol Butcher High School. Y'all know Sotol. She was born in Mumbai, came to America in nineteen eighty-four, came to Sugar Land in nineteen ninety-two. Last year, she lost a gallant battle against cancer. Her too-short life was all about kids. She was on the child's avenues of Fort Bend Board, Lucy Council of Fort Bend, the Sugar Land Cultural Arts Board, the Sugar Land Heritage Board, and the Fort Bend Education Foundation. But most importantly, y'all know her because she had the title that Jason has right now, the President of the Fort Bend Board of Trustees, the same title that Grail's had and Chris's had, Jim has had, Annie will have, Dave will have, and Allison will have. Her board was the board that hired Dr. Dupree. To use your mission statement, you guys say, we remember schools for names that inspire, equip, and imagine. Every young man or woman that attends Sotol Butcher High School will have a tremendous inspiration, equipped, and they'll imagine. I strongly encourage you to name this high school after Sotol. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Congressman Olson. We appreciate your service to our country and thank you for being on the line with us this evening. Next on our agenda are our information items. First being our strategic and budgetary update for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of different staff members who are going to lead this discussion this evening, but I just wanted to get started with the reminder that, as always, we began our budget discussions back in February, but unlike prior years, this year our focus has been on strategy and striving to reach our goals and funding those goals. So with the pandemic, with recent economic changes in our state, we are having to make some revisions to the updates we previously shared with the board. So I'm going to let our Deputy Superintendent Deanna Sayavedra begin by talking about how our priorities and strategies have been adjusted for next year. And then Brian will follow through with the budget update in preparation for adoption of the budget in June. But as soon as I said that, I think Brian's actually going to give the first couple of slides. So I'll let them take it from here, Brian and Deanna. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. Tonight's presentation will provide the board with an update on the budget process in light of the challenges posed by COVID- nineteen and the district's planning and preparation efforts for the two thousand and twenty-one academic year. And I believe we are waiting for the presentation to pull up, and it has started. So you all may recall in February that we shared the principles guiding the budget process for two thousand and twenty-one, and those included advancing the district's goals and objectives by allowing strategy to drive the budget, as Dr. Dupree just mentioned. And this is something that we've emphasized throughout the budget process. Utilizing fund balance capacity while maintaining a ninety-day reserve. We want to ensure that as we build the budget, we adhere to the board's fund balance policy requirement and no tax ratification election in two thousand and twenty-one. Our revenue forecasting assumes no changes in the current tax rate other than tax compression prescribed by House Bill Three, and consequently, the budget process focused on maximizing the anticipated resources to be generated without a tax ratification election. Next slide, please. The situation we're currently facing with COVID- nineteen is unprecedented, and we have had to adjust our strategy. As you're aware, we shifted to online learning in early April, and the organizational efforts to support that initiative are extremely high. We also recognize, based on comments made by the state controller, that the state stands to lose several billion dollars in sales tax and oil revenues during the crisis, and this will directly impact funding the district receipts from the state. Based on those factors, we reviewed our strategic priorities and made adjustments to account for our response to the pandemic and the need to be fiscally conservative due to the economic uncertainty that we're facing. And I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent Deanna Sayavedra to discuss the adjustments we've made to our strategic priorities since we originally reviewed them with the board back in February. Next slide, please, Gary. Deanna, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, President Burdine, members of the board, and Dr. Dupree. As Brian and Dr. Dupree both mentioned, the staff presented an update to the board in early spring, and we were very excited about that presentation because it marked a time when we were virtually well ahead of schedule in terms of developing our budget. As Brian indicated, the strategic priorities drove the budget development process. And as we outlined our budget, we had four major areas in mind. We wanted to look at district systems and improving those systems, foundational student programming, programs of choice, and student and staff support. The total dollar amount of the original proposal that we shared with the board in the spring, as you see on the screen, was twenty-one point one million dollars. Since our initial presentation to the board, as others have indicated, the COVID- nineteen pandemic has substantially impacted our ability to effectively implement all of the priorities as presented. Although our priorities remain the same, we have engaged in a very thoughtful process and analysis of our current situation to determine our path forward. Our main focus and primary goal is to make sure that whatever we launch from this point forward is done with a high level of fidelity and a great level of success. So although our current online platform is serving students well, what we do know about our current reality is that we will have a substantial number of students who will require interventions. We also know that with that intervention and learning gap, our staff will need to be focused on adjusting the curriculum to account for and mitigate those learning gaps. There's a tremendous amount of work in doing that. Lastly, our organizational capacity to successfully launch new programming, as I said, will be limited due to the new focus and the significant investment of time to plan, prepare, and prepare for the new school year, which presents many unknowns, is going to be unprecedented. As Dr. Dupree shared in our last board meeting, we're looking at a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C, along with adjusting the curriculum. So there's a number of different challenges before us, which we've thought about in terms of what we need to do differently as we move forward. Gary, can you move to our next slide, please? So as we look ahead and we continue our efforts to respond to the COVID- nineteen pandemic, we have adjusted our implementation timelines along with our budget projections. What you see on the slide before you, you'll notice that the priorities on the slide are color-coded. Those things color-coded in the maroon color are things that we intend to proceed with as planned. Those things that are shaded in gray, we've determined the need to shift them and adjust the timeline to launch for two thousand and twenty-two. Those things that you see color-coded in gold, we've adjusted the timeline so that there's partial implementation moving forward in two thousand and twenty-one with additional implementation in two thousand and twenty-two. As I began the presentation, I shared with you the four areas of focus, which were systems, foundational student programming, programs of choice, and staff support. So I'm going to start with the first area which accounts for the systems. Those are collaborative communities, community-based accountability, and cybersecurity. So as you notice on the screen for collaborative communities, there is no dollar amount. The initial goal for collaborative communities going into two thousand and twenty-two was really to build out our collaborative community staff so that we could continue to build exemplary community partnerships. We will be going forward with hiring the staff necessary to lead that effort. However, we've found other strategic ways to redirect currently vacant positions so that we can continue to move forward with that and not impact the dollar amount in the budget for the two thousand and twenty-one school year, which is why you see a zero budget amount there. Similarly, when we think about our community-based accountability, we've invested a lot of time and effort into building our system. This year, we were engaged in a pilot of six campuses, and at the point of the pilot, they were developing an evidentiary plan, and we were beginning to build our reporting system to report out to the board in August. Because of the pandemic, we've pulled back on that. And as we move forward, the dollar amount that was earmarked for this particular area in the budget was to go out for procurement for a reporting system. Although we'll continue to build our evidentiary plan as we go forward and will begin to develop all of the information needed to go out for procurement, we're going to be very strategic about when we launch any purchase of a new system so that it aligns with a new budget cycle or we know that whether other funds will be available and possibly redirect funds in that area. But at this point, that will be another dollar amount that we don't have to invest in. When we think about cybersecurity and the prospect of continued online learning platforms for both our employees and for our students, cybersecurity continues to be at the forefront. For this particular strategic priority, it is coded in maroon. Therefore, we will be continuing with cybersecurity, and I believe the board will receive some training associated with that on May the eighteenth. As we move on to our foundational student programming, there are several areas associated with this priority. Dual language, innovative programming, and pre-K kindergarten expansion. Again, with our dual language, we've done a tremendous job of planning forward to launch dual language. However, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we want to make sure that any new programming that we move forward with, that we have an environment that's conducive to an extremely successful launch. In this particular case, there's teacher training involved. There's building a community, and therefore, we felt it important for us to hold on the launch of the pre-K kinder in first grade as planned and move that to two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. When we think about our innovative programming, there are a number of items in this particular strategy. If you recall, the purpose of thinking about our innovative programming was really to support two particular communities to retain and attract students to those facilities and to provide enrichment programs that really set students up for success. And so as we think about the innovative programs that will continue to be planned going forward... And so as we think about the innovative programs that will continue to be planned going forward, we will continue to look at course offerings associated with technical theater and American Sign Language for both Marshall High School and Willeridge High School, Steinway Piano Technician Course at Marshall High School, Architecture, Engineering, and Construction at Marshall High School, enrichment opportunities in the form of the Houston Youth Symphony Coda String Project at Hunter's Glen and Jones Elementary in the Marshall Feeder Pattern, and then community engagement, continuing to collaborate with the PTO for all schools within Marshall and the Willeridge Feeder Pattern Communities, again, to support stronger community partnerships. As we think about our pre-kindergarten expansion, I wanted to share that the dollar amount is zero because the original amount that was presented to the board in early spring was associated with the build-out of our early childhood programming at the central office and adding some additional staff to, you know, in terms of oversight and planning. Again, that is going to shift to the 21, '22 school year. We will continue with pre-kindergarten full-day programming in 21, '22, and our budget does account for any additional classrooms that we may need due to increased enrollment. That includes instructional resources and any staff that may need to be hired. And we will also continue with our curriculum writing associated with pre-kindergarten. Again, all of those are already baked into the numbers that Brian will be sharing with you in the rest of the presentation. As we move on to student programs of choice, you'll notice that we've got both a gold dollar amount and a maroon dollar amount. So in terms of our Early Literacy Center and our EIA Early Intervention Academy, with our Early Intervention Academy, we are moving forward, we're set to move that program to Quell Valley Elementary that services several special education students from across the district, and we are in our third year of implementation. So too with our Ridgemont Elementary ELC, it's in our third year of implementation, and we want to continue the good work that we've started there. Our first kinder cohort will be moving into second grade, so we want to continue to provide them the needed support as they move into second grade. As we think about the early literacy that was planned for Hunter's Glen Elementary, that was a very difficult decision for us to make because we know that the need in the Marshall Feeder Pattern is just as great as it was in the Willeridge Feeder Pattern. However, again, in order to successfully launch that program and ensure high-quality teacher recruitment, to ensure student recruitment so that parents can thoughtfully think about the choices that lie ahead, and to create a very strong campus culture focused on literacy and really embedding all of the teacher learning that needs to occur, we've made a decision to postpone the launch of the Hunter's Glen Early Literacy Center until the 21, '22 school year. As we move on to our high school programs, again, we've got our early high school and PTEC programs that are currently housed at Hightower High School, Marshall High School, and Willeridge High School. This year, we'll complete the first cohort, who will move on to their sophomore year, and we will be bringing on a new freshman cohort. We will continue to move forward with those programs as planned, as indicated on the screen. Our last section really deals with student and staff support. In that area, if you recall, we talked about the need, based on our curriculum audit, for teachers to have adequate planning time to plan and deliver lessons really framed with student ownership of learning in mind. So as we think about that, this is one of the areas where we've adjusted the timeline so that we can partially implement in year one and then complete implementation in year two. So specifically with elementary school in mind, if you recall, the staff that was approved was staff associated with PE, Fine Arts, and at that time, we also wanted to expand our STEM opportunities. By doing that, we would meet three basic goals. Number one, making sure that our teachers had at least 70 minutes of planning time every seven days. We would meet all of the required minutes for PE and Fine Arts and then provide additional enrichment opportunities through STEM for our students, and the schedule would call for increased intervention time. So the adjustment that we're making here is that we're going to move forward with the PE and Fine Arts staffing that will still allow us to meet our compliance measures for PE and Fine Arts, will still allow us to meet the planning threshold for teachers and increase intervention time for our students. In year two, we will add the additional STEM staffing so that we can increase and improve our library program. And so that is how we'll phase that particular initiative. For secondary planning, we have determined that we still need to use the year 21, '22 to do some additional planning and determine what road and what path we will take in terms of increasing the amount of planning time for teachers at the secondary level. Moving on to the Reading Academy, that is an initiative that came to us via House Bill III, which is an unfunded mandate. If you'll notice, we're going to continue to move forward with the Reading Academy. The majority of that dollar amount is associated with the staff that is needed to plan as a state-authorized provider for the Reading Academy, along with being able to develop the modules that will be specific to Fort Bend ISD and to manage all of the logistics moving forward with the Reading Academy. The state is moving forward with their plan. The additional money associated with this particular initiative, we went back and looked at offering supplemental pay for teachers as we move through the Reading Academy process from year one all the way to year three. In the initial phase, those that'll be trained will be campus administrators, central office leaders, and then the lit teachers, the literacy teachers at the elementary campuses. So those are our strategic budget priorities, as I indicated, as we've revised them. You can see that the dollar amount has been significantly reduced from $21.1 million to $7.7 million. Gary, can you go to the next slide? And as I wrap up before I hand it off to Brian, I'd like to emphasize that, again, we are committed to our district strategic plan and the priorities that we've laid out thus far. Although we will be adjusting our timelines, we remain committed to those strategic priorities. We will be maintaining the planning time for elementary teachers. We'll also be maintaining existing programs and moving forward with those items. And again, our goal is to continue to further the district's mission and vision while being fiscally prudent and conservative due to the state outlook. And with that, I'll hand it over to Brian.
Thank you, Deanna. Gary, if you can go to the next slide, please. So on our compensation item, the board received an updated version of this. Next slide, please, Gary. And as you all are aware, payroll is the largest expenditure that we have in the general fund, and based on our current economic outlook, we have made significant adjustments in anticipation of a future reduction in state revenue. Our current recommendation is for no general pay increase and that we not implement the teacher staff in the 2021 school year. And we're basing that on that we don't believe it would be fiscally prudent to take on any recurring payroll costs that could detrimentally affect us in the long run. We are, however, recommending targeted equity adjustments and stipends. The recommended adjustments are areas where the district is lagging the market and it impacts our ability to attract and retain high-quality candidates, and the ongoing cost for these adjustments is $550,000. Next slide, please. And we do anticipate finishing the fiscal year in 2019, '20 with a surplus, and we've adjusted our expenditures based on analysis and revenue projections, and I'll walk through those now. As we approach the end of the 1920 school year, we look closely and monitor the impact of COVID-19 on our year-end revenue estimates. At this time, we don't anticipate there will be a material impact to property tax collections as more than 96% of the total levy has been collected at this point. Other local revenues, such as interest earnings, athletics, Fine Arts, and summer school have been adjusted to reflect the volatility in the interest rate market, as well as the cancellation of UI elements. And then the methodology that TEA will use to determine average daily attendance will not have a substantial impact on our current revenue projections. They'll be using the average daily attendance as calculated through the end of the fourth, six weeks and then adjust the resulting ADA or average daily attendance to account for historical districts or differences, so we don't believe that that will negatively impact us. And then finally, in our federal revenues, we do expect to see a decrease in charge revenues due to the reduction of services provided to students as a consequence of social distancing and the district being closed. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, activities related to our emergency response to COVID-19 have had an impact on our 19-year-end expenditures. The incremental costs include hazard pay and overtime, the purchase of personal protective equipment, and cleaning and disinfection supplies. And these additional costs were encouraged to provide students. Additional costs include hotspots for students and to support online learning. And the costs associated with these items are being offset by expected savings and vehicle fuel, electricity, substitute costs, and student and staff travel, just as a few items that we're expecting to see lower costs, so there is some offset on these expenditures. Next slide, please. So when we compare our projected 19, '20 year-end statement of revenues and expenditures to our adopted budget, the revenue forecast will be about 1.2% higher, or about $8.37 million. And that adjustment can be explained by the impact of higher-than-projected enrollment. We had about 500 more students than projected. Property value growth, which came in at 5.6% versus 5%, and then FEMA reimbursements and other foundation revenues for TEA from SPED. And then finally, we also received Hurricane Harvey insurance claims. On the expenditure side, we are predicting that we'll finish the year slightly below budget and that the COVID-19 expenditures that I just outlined are included in this final projection. So the net change to fund balance will be a positive $70,000. And again, this is based on our conservative estimates, and we're expecting that the fund balance reserve will be at 107 days, which is well above our 90-day reserve requirement. And I do want to point out that we budgeted for a $10 million drawdown in fund balance. However, our year-end estimate anticipates our fund balance will increase, which, again, that's where that $70,000 comes in, so we'll actually end the year where we expected to begin the year last year. Next slide, please. As we look at our year-end fund balance, we'll have just under $29 million in committed fund balance, and I'll show you in more detail what that is in a moment. The next two lines that are highlighted are our 90-day fund balance, and you'll notice that there is a slight decline in state revenue stabilization, and that's due to the lower-than-expected expenditures. As expenditures go down, the amount required to be set aside is reduced as well. And then going into 2021, we expect to have just under $210 million at our 90-day reserve, which represents the 107 days in operating expenses I mentioned just a moment ago. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in the previous table, we are expecting a reduction in our committed fund balance of $3.4 million. We're using $3.4 million in major maintenance for portable building moves in the current year, and you'll see later that we replenish those funds in 2021 in our committed fund balance. And finally, I want to point out that we're maintaining our $15 million in economic stabilization for use in 2021. And remember, this economic stabilization is over and above our 90-day policy requirement, and it's available to offset any expected downturn in the economy or loss of state funding. Next slide, please. And if you can go ahead and click to the next one. There are a number of factors that are influencing the budget from a revenue perspective for the upcoming year, and those include both the academic and economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, enrollment growth, and property values, and the tax rate. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we are accounting for COVID-19 as we prepare for the upcoming year. We're anticipating that we'll have a significant academic intervention efforts, as Deanna mentioned. And the thing that I'll mention, we have received our preliminary tax roll from the chief appraiser, and the tax roll is based on values as of January 1st, so there's no anticipated impact on the 2020 tax year. However, the impact that the pandemic has on values for the 21 tax year haven't been determined, and we'll be having discussions with the chief appraiser in the coming months as he hopefully begins to have some clarity on how those values may be impacted because of the current pandemic. And then I mentioned earlier that the state is expected to lose several billion dollars in revenue. Based on comments that have been made by the controller, it does not appear that the funding for the upcoming year will be impacted. However, he has signaled that the funding for the upcoming biennium will be significantly impacted. And as we've seen in comments from TEA and some elected officials, the $36 billion in aid that the state is receiving from the CARES Act may be retained by the state to partially offset the decline in revenues. So we may not receive that direct benefit through grants, but rather, they'll be using it to offset revenue declines for the state aid. Next slide, please. For the upcoming 2021 school year, the district's demographer shared with you all the projected growth back in February. We're using 79,076 students, and again, this is based on our moderate projection growth. And this is the growth model that we use throughout the forecast, is the moderate growth. Next slide, please. We are factoring in student population that received SPED, Special Education Services. We're expecting that ratio to increase from 10.1% to 11.2% of the total population. And the board may recall that back in February, the board did approve the staffing associated with this growth. That was about $6.4 million for additional teachers and aides and other campus support that assist students with disabilities. Next slide, please. The portion of our students that will receive or identified as economically disadvantaged is also expected to grow with total enrollment. Overall, we're projecting to have an economically disadvantaged student population of around 45% of our total projected enrollment, and this is, again, an increase year-over-year from prior years. Next slide, please. The staff did visit with the chief appraiser back in February and had discussions about the preliminary values and growth rate assumptions. And at that time, he was not ready to provide direct information. And in late March, he recommended that we use 4.25% as a growth rate for revenue forecasting purposes. And we received the preliminary tax roll on April 27th, and the growth rate assumption was actually 7.09%. So the additional growth is from over $1 billion in new property that was added to the tax roll and higher-than-anticipated commercial property revaluation. And what I do want to point out is that the 7.09% growth does take into consideration loss of value through the appraisal review board protests. So this is a conservative number, even though it did come in higher than what we were initially expecting. And there is about $9 billion that is currently under protest, and we're assuming that roughly 60% of that value will be maintained, which, again, is a very extremely conservative number because typically it comes in closer to 90 to 95%. So we're being conservative in that respect related to that value under protest. And next slide, please. On the far right of the graph, you can see how the 7% property growth compares to recent history. The certified net taxable value growth rate has averaged about 5.5% over the last three years. And then when we look at recent history in years And then when we look at recent history in years following the great recession. We did observe growth rates that were close to zero or in fact went negative. And I'll talk about it more in a moment, but our growth rate does exceed the two and a half percent cap that the tax rate. And that basically means the tax rate will be subject to compression that's established by Senate Bill two and House Bill three. Next slide, please. So the preliminary role that we received from the central appraisal district shows expected property values for the tax year twenty twenty to be about forty four point six billion dollars. And you can see over time, we've seen a steady expansion trend from about nineteen ninety five through two thousand and nine. And then two thousand and ten through thirteen were that period where we had stagnant or little growth. And then beginning in fourteen, we once again saw the trend resume. So. Based on our conversations with the chief appraiser, again, it comes down to, we had about a billion extra dollars. And new value that was added to the tax roll. And then revaluation of commercial properties have led to a fairly substantial increase over what we have experienced over the last two to three years. Next slide, please. So again, as I mentioned, because our growth rate does exceed the two and a half percent cap that was put in place in the last legislative session. We're going to be subjected to compression of our operations and maintenance tax rate. So prior to House Bill three becoming law last year, the O and M rate. For school districts included a tier one foundation portion up to a dollar and a tier two enrichment portion up to seventeen cents. And that total combined allowed for a maximum tax rate of a dollar and seventeen cents. House Bill three introduced a compression mechanism to reduce O and M tier one rate and maintain the tier two rate at seventeen cents. However, two of the copper pennies in tier two were converted to golden pennies. So the total maximum O and M rate for a district under the new House Bill three for year one. Is based on a district's property value growth in comparison to statewide property value growth. So the implementation of the compression mechanism has two phases. For phase one that occurred in our current school year, the tier one O and M rate was. Subject, subject to an statewide compression percentage of ninety three percent. So the district's O and M rate for the nineteen twenty school year was reduced to ninety three cents. And we added to that our tier two rate of six cents, bringing the total tax rate to ninety nine cents, which was a seven cent reduction to the O and M tax rate. Phase two is effective on September first, and that will impact our tax rate in the upcoming year. And sets a statewide compression percentage of the lesser of ninety three percent or a compression percentage set by statewide property value growth. So the state estimated property value growth at four point zero one percent. Which means on average, there would be an additional one point three six percent compression on the tax rate. So as I, as I just mentioned, we were at ninety three percent, which works out to ninety three cents. Looking at it, if we were under four percent growth or two and a half percent growth, we would be at ninety one point six four cents. As I mentioned, our growth is above that. And as a result, we will see additional compression that I'll show you in just a moment. And this is also an important point to remember as you may recall that TA will now begin calculating. And making available the maximum compressed rate for all districts. And if a school district has a compressed rate that exceeds or is less than ninety percent of the other districts rate. The commissioner will recompute the lower rate until it's within the ninety percent range. So this is a new process that we'll be going through. And we're not quite sure how the mechanics will work or how this will look. But again, we are expecting compression of our O and M tax rate. Next slide, please. We have done calculations on the tier one tax rate to show what it looks like as value increases above the two and a half percent. And if you look at the far left, you'll notice that that is where we start at ninety three cents based on our current rate and based on changes with the House Bill three. And again, looking at the average property value growth for the state that's expected for twenty twenty at four point one percent, you can notice that. The second data point shows a reduction in the tier one rate to the ninety one point six four cents that I just mentioned. And any district that has local property value growth that is greater than that, we'll see a decline in their. Overall property value rate or their tax rate. So again, at seven percent, if you look at this, will be reduced to eighty eight point two four cents. And that does exclude the six golden pennies. So we will be able to add those back in. And our total tax rate for two thousand and twenty, for the two thousand and twenty tax year will be at ninety four point two four cents. Which is about a four point or is a four point seven six reduction from the current rate. And again, I do want to emphasize that this does not impact the INS rate and we'll be discussing that in more detail and give you an overall picture of the tax rate shortly. Next slide, please. So with a tier one O and M tax rate compression mechanism, it does not reduce the district's revenue. What it does is it shifts a portion of the financial burden from local, local property tax collections over to the state. However, that shift in funding responsibility is very concerning considering the economic outlook over the next three years. Based on what we've heard, we expect that funding won't be an issue in twenty twenty one. However, if state revenues decline based on the controllers projections, we're expecting adjustments to the state budget will have to be made. And this new financial obligation that the state has of making up the difference in property value growth could very well be impacted. And as I mentioned, the CARES Act funding may be held back to offset a portion of the decline. This is what the state did. Back during the last recession with the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act. And the state, of course, does have a rainy day fund. But unfortunately, we won't have any clarity on the strategies that the state may employ until January when the eighty seventh legislature convenes. Next slide, please. So now we're moving into the major assumptions that we've included in the budget. We have updated our property value to reflect the seven percent growth received from the preliminary certified role. We're including the additional staffing associated with enrollment. We have the seven point seven million dollars in strategic priorities that Deanna reviewed earlier. And again, that is a reduction of about fourteen million dollars from the prior number. And I want to point out that there were a number of positions approved in February, February associated with our strategic priorities. Those positions remain approved. However, we are not recommending that these positions be budgeted. And as funding becomes available either in the current year or future fiscal years, we can begin the process of budgeting for those positions to move those priorities forward. And finally, we have included the funds associated with the compensation recommendations that I discussed earlier. Next slide, please. For twenty twenty one, our total revenue budget is projected to be around seven hundred and thirty million. That represents about a two point four percent increase from the nineteen twenty year end. And our total expenditure budget is expected to be seven hundred and thirty seven point five million, which is about a three percent increase from the nineteen twenty year end estimate. And this includes all the expenditure items that I just mentioned. The budget forecast also includes a transfer in of two and a half million dollars from our extended learning program. That program continues to be very successful and we've been able to increase that amount over year over year. I do want to point out as you're seeing two point seven in the prior year versus two point five billion, a portion of that is from the sale of property. So that is not all inclusive of the. Transfer in from our extended learning program. And then finally, the net impact projects a use of economic stabilization of about four point eight seven million. And a fund balance reserve of ninety days. Next slide, please. The reduction in the fund balance goes from again, from a hundred and seven to ninety days. And that's mainly driven by reserving additional funds and committed fund balance by about twenty two point seven million dollars. Next slide, please. So in our recommendations for the year end. Dedicated fund balance amendment that we'll bring to the board in June. Will be recommending that we replenish our major maintenance commitment to six point four million dollars as it was before. And establishing an instructional materials reserve to cover an expected shortfall of about eight point five million in the twenty one. Of twenty twenty one instructional materials allotment. And I do want to caveat this number by saying it is possible that depending on timing, these funds may be needed in the current fiscal year. And if so, our year end estimate will be adjusted and this number will be reduced accordingly. However, that will be dependent on the timing of when that order is entered for those materials and when we expect to receive it. So the final point is that we do recommend increasing our economic stabilization by fourteen million dollars. So you recall as we end nineteen twenty, we're expecting it to be at fifteen million. And this, we're recommending that we increase it by an additional fourteen million to bring it to twenty nine million. In anticipation of the economic uncertainty that we expect in twenty two and beyond. Next slide, please. We've also prepared a three year outlook to illustrate the district's financial position. And I would like to say that we're being aggressively conservative with our three year outlook. We're assuming that we have no property value growth for both twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. We're also assuming that the state will be required to reduce the basic allotment in response to the potential state revenue shortfall. And then we've based our total student enrollment on our pasta moderate growth as we mentioned previously. And our special education population will continue to grow by about one point one percent year over year. And then our property value growth cap, as we mentioned a bit earlier, and the tax rate compression remain in effect. And then we have flat interest earnings growth and that's continued to assume during, as a result of the current market conditions. And finally, compensatory education students are those that are economically disadvantaged would represent about forty five percent of total enrollment. Next slide, please. Our assumptions on the expenditure side, we're continuing to look to add additional staff for both the general and special education teachers, aides. And the support staff for campuses based on our enrollment growth. The expenditure accounts for the teacher step increases beginning again in twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. However, there is no general pay increase included for non-teaching district personnel. And then we are assuming that we will potentially experience higher health benefits costs and that there will be additional costs to the district. Beginning in twenty one, twenty two, obviously, if that does occur, we would be balancing how we manage those increases with the employee portion as well. And then we've included the staff necessary to support the expansion of the existing early college, high school and P tech programs. And we've adjusted campus budgets due to enrollment growth. And then finally, as Deanna pointed out during the strategic priorities discussion. We have shifted the strategic priorities in the budget from twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two. And that includes the ELC at Hunter's Glen, community based accountability, costs, dual language. And the teacher planning time for both elementary and secondary. Next slide, please. So we do anticipate ending twenty twenty one within the ninety day fund balance reserve requirement. As we move into twenty one, twenty two, the total revenues decreased by one point two nine percent. To seven hundred and twenty one million dollars. And this represents that zero property value growth and the potential reduction of the basic allotment. So the growth that we're seeing or the lack of a huge decline is primarily because of the student growth that we have. And then simultaneously, we are expecting expenditures to grow by about seven to seven hundred and sixty five million. And that's about three point seven percent higher than the prior year. And again, that does include those strategic priorities. So the net result is a twelve and a half million dollar deficit after we utilize the twenty nine million dollars in economic stabilization. And the fund balance is drawn down below ninety days. And that trend does continue in twenty two, twenty three, although revenue, we are projecting to see it begin to grow again at that point based on prior history. And the expenditures increase as well, but again, we would be operating in a deficit. Now, I do want to emphasize at this point that although we are showing deficits in the out years. When staff brings forward, brings forward the budget in those years, we will not exceed the ninety day fund balance requirement. What we're doing with the forecast is modeling out if we continue expenditures on our current path where we may need to make adjustments. And it does illustrate that some of those strategic priorities that we've shifted to twenty one, twenty two. May need to be shifted again if the current economic conditions that we're facing don't change. So we are cognizant of that fact, but I do want to emphasize that although we're projecting a deficit. Doesn't mean that it will necessarily materialize because we will be making adjustments in the budget we bring forward to the board for final adoption. Next slide, please.
Brian, before you move on to debt service, I would like to add, interject a couple of quick comments here about the general fund budget. So first of all, I just want the board to be aware because you know, we've received some questions about a couple of items that I want to bring to your attention. Just for your own knowledge and for the knowledge of anyone who may be listening. First of all, we've had to make some very difficult decisions around this budget proposal. One of those difficult decisions was about compensation. Because we, we know that especially right now, everyone in this organization is working hard. They work hard on any given day. But they're working especially hard now to continue learning in a new way. For our students online and while teaching from home in most cases. And our central staff has also worked exceptionally hard to stand up all these new systems. So the natural inclination in my mind is I want to give everybody a raise. But when we look at these budget projections, a raise is a big rock in our budget. And so we had to face the reality that that is something that we want to do. But we have other priorities right now, including adding staff. That's going to assist with planning and student intervention at the elementary. That's a big rock that's going to make a huge difference for us going forward. I would also remind us that we, everybody in the organization got a very generous raise last year because of House Bill three. And so that, in my view, that is going to keep us market competitive for the next year. But it's also the reason we need to set aside this money in reserves. Even with the projected increase in value, any extra money we have right now, we need to set aside in a prudent way. Because in another year or two, even if times are tough, we may want to try to squeeze out some kind of small raise, step adjustments. Or, or some type of retention supplement for staff. So I just, we need to stay as flexible as we can in a prudent way. And that's why we've not recommended significant compensation adjustments this year for all staff. The other thing I wanted to speak to because there's a little, there's a conflation a little bit of the two things we're talking about this evening. Some of the priorities, in fact, most of the priorities are being postponed, not because of budgetary reasons. But because of the pandemic. And a primary, primary example of that, the greatest example is our work at the ELC at Hunter's Glen. We received a number of questions about that from some community members. So I wanted to be very clear that we are not postponing that because of budget constraints. We have the funding for that. You see it, it's still in the budget only a year out. But with the pandemic, we are just not in a position to effectively hire staff and entire campus. We did appoint the instructional officer for that school several months ago before the pandemic. But and by now, under a normal circumstance without the pandemic, that individual would have been staffed and been working to, they would be doing planning right now. They would be doing training right now. But it's just not feasible to expect that school to be stood up right now. And so we're very, I'm disappointed personally. By it because we know the school is needed, but we had to make some harder choices. I would also add that the recruitment and the retaining of that staff. Those teachers in the current ELC have contracts that are substantially longer than other teachers for a reason. Because they're engaged in deep training about literacy and the work they're doing in the school. So in a virtual environment that we're in right now, it is not a good time to try to staff that school one hundred percent from, for every position. And put, put them through the significant weeks worth of training they'll have to participate in. The other reality we're facing is our teacher turnover right now is down seventy percent from a typical year. And we saw this pattern back in twenty eleven during financial crisis like this. Teachers don't jump jobs. Because they know if they go to another district, they're going to be the bottom of the totem pole seniority wise. And when the financial strains, straits come in a year or two, they're likely to lose their job because they're the last ten. So recruiting right now is exceptionally challenging as well because people are largely staying put. So again, if you can see the time that goes in trying to staff the new ELC. And the fact we're not going to get the, even if we tried, we would not get the pick of the very best teachers available because of economic conditions. We, that was another reason we wanted to, to leave it as it is. I will add, one of the questions we've received has been, well, if you're not going to start ours, why are you expanding the ELC in the Willeridge community? And the answer to that that I have shared is that the Willeridge ELC, the one in Ridgemont is going into its third year. And this is the year that we're going to have children go from first grade, leaving the ELC into second grade in the elementary campus. And we have made substantial investments and seen great success in this program. But we will undo a great deal of that if we just toss those children into a typical second grade. But we will undo a great deal of that if we just toss those children into a typical second-grade classroom. So we're having to invest time and, and energy in training those teachers. So the expansion is not broadening the program as much as it is extending the program from first grade to second grade for children. Who are already, who have been in the program for two years. So I just wanted to point out, there's some questions and they're very good questions that our community members are asking. But I just want to be clear that these have been some very hard decisions. The pandemic is causing us to have to revisit all of our priorities, as you heard Deanna address. And the budget, of course, is causing us to have to revisit a number of things that we had planned. But I don't want to get confused that most of these priorities we're postponing are not for budgetary reasons. Although the budget is benefiting from the postponement, but they are more for strategic reasons. To make sure that we can stand up those programs with success. Because the worst thing we can do is we've learned our lesson in the last seven years. When we try to throw a program together quickly, it is very stressful on the organization and it doesn't always succeed. And if we try to throw together a program like this ELC under these circumstances, the children will lose. Because it will not be well-prepared and well-built for success. And the district will lose because we will have attempted wasted money on a program, not getting the full return on our investment. And we would be criticized for that in the community as well. So I, I understand the concerns we're hearing from the community, but I wanted to share that a little bit for the, for the board. As we, as we kind of wrap up this conversation, so we can kind of distinguish the types of postponements and the types of issues we're discussing tonight. So with that, Brian, I'll turn it back over to you to continue on with your presentation.
Okay, thank you. And Gary, if you can put the presentation back up, please. In advance, two slides, please. So I'd like to start off the debt portion of the presentation by reminding the board and the public that the district engages in a very active debt management program to keep the tax rate low. The board has adopted a budget and fiscal strategy that's used to guide financial decisions. And the rating agencies do look on this very favorably. Uh, if a entity has the fiscal policies, but even more importantly, does the governing body abide by those policies? And in our case, that is definitely the case. We also have a commercial paper program that we utilize to cash flow our projects prior to issuing debt. That's allowed us to avoid almost twelve-million dollars in interest costs. That's a direct benefit to the taxpayers in the district. And I think that our most recent debt transaction in April is a testament to the effectiveness of these practices. Because just prior to the transactions, both Fitch and S and P reaffirmed the district's AA-plus rating. Which indicates to investors that our debt is very low risk. And again, this was done in the midst of a fiscal turmoil in the market as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And if you follow the market, you're probably well, well aware of that turmoil. And even in the midst of that, our strong credit rating allowed us to refund a hundred-and-sixty-seven-million dollars. Which resulted in an almost eight-million dollars in net present value savings. And the interest rate that we received was two-point-six percent, which is very favorable. Next slide, please. Our debt fund is used to pay off the district's outstanding principal and interest on voter authorized debt. And our last referendum that was authorized by the voters in November two thousand and eighteen was nine-hundred-and-ninety-two million and included a three-cent increase to the tax rate. The first two pennies were approved for the current fiscal year. And we are recommending that the final penny for twenty-twenty-one be incorporated. And this will support the anticipated debt that will be issued in support of the projects that were part of the eighteen bond. And we do expect to issue new money for the bond in the August timeframe and have about eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight-million dollars left to issue. And as I'll remind you again, that the tax revenues in the debt service fund are not impacted by Senate Bill Two or House Bill Three. Next slide, please. So we anticipate ending the nineteen-twenty fiscal year with fourteen-point-nine-million dollars in fund balance. However, the district makes debt payments in February and August, so the majority of that balance will be used on the August debt payments. And for twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one, we're expecting a hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-eight-million dollars in local revenues. And that does include the additional one penny on the INS side. And the one-point-six-million dollars that we're receiving in state revenue. When the state enacted the additional homestead exemption, the statewide exemption. Uh, this is the state portion that is offsetting the not lost revenue. And then our expenditures are at a hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-eight-two-million dollars, and that does include the additional penny on the, I'm sorry. I, our expenditures are at a hundred-and-twenty-six-point-four-seven-million dollars on principal and interest. Next slide, please. And now that we've talked through the general fund and debt service, I can show you the impact on the tax bill for the upcoming year. Our current tax rate is a dollar and twenty-seven cents. And for twenty-twenty-one, we're projected at a dollar twenty-three-point-two-four cents. And as I showed you earlier, the O and M rate is decreasing by point zero-four-seven-six or four-point-seven-six cents. While the INS or income and sinking rate is increasing by one penny. And we will maintain our six existing building pennies. So overall, we'll see a decrease in the tax rate of three-point-seven-six cents from our current tax rate. And again, this is all a result of the tier-one maintenance and operation compression that's set forth in House Bill Three. Next slide, please. And this illustrates our overall trend in the tax rate over the last fifteen-plus years. And you can see the dollar and twenty-four cents is a decline from the current year. Next slide, please. And the property value schedules that we receive from the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District reflect an average residence market value of three-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. That is a five-and-a-half percent increase from the prior year, so that number doesn't align with a seven percent. Because this is just for residential purposes, the remaining growth would be due to commercial properties. And the average taxable value of a residence after all exemptions are applied is estimated at two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Which is actually a one-point-seven percent increase compared to the prior year. So there is a significant decline from market value to the actual taxable value of a residence. And as a result of the three-point-seven-six cent reduction in the tax rate. The annual taxes on the average resident is expected to decline by one-point-three percent. Which results in forty-three dollars and fifteen cents savings on an annual tax bill. Next slide, please. Uh, the last one we'll review this evening is the child nutrition fund. And like the general fund, we are expecting an impact from COVID-nineteen. We're currently operating twenty-three feeding sites, the majority of which have been in operation since March sixteenth. And the closure of all schools has resulted in significant revenue loss, and those staff members working the feeding sites are receiving hazard pay. And as you'll see, this has had a negative impact on fund balance. For twenty-twenty-one, we'll begin using the community eligibility provision at twenty-six campuses. And this program allows all students at a campus to eat free breakfast and lunch regardless of their income level. And this was a recommendation in the Gibson audit that was conducted on the C and B program. And then finally, we do have an equity adjustment and calendar changes that are incorporated into the proposed budget. Next slide, please.
Brian, Brian, something has changed on your end, and we cannot hear you as well.
Okay, let me see if. Is that better?
Let's see if some nods, I think it's a little better.
Okay, I had an, I was using an earpiece and I think the battery went out in the middle of my conversation. So the, so the operating revenue for the year-end is expected to decline by about six, close to six million. And again, that's a result of the loss of the meals that are paid for on campuses due to the school closures. And we are expecting a three-point-seven-million-dollar loss in the fund. However, there is sufficient fund balance to cover the loss, and it's not expected to continue into twenty-twenty-one. And for the upcoming year, revenues are expected at thirty-two-point-two million. Operating expenditures, which includes personnel and food costs, at thirty-one-point-six million. And the fund is expected to end the year with a five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar surplus, which will be increasing the fund balance. Next slide, please. And that wraps up the discussion on all the funds that the board will be asked to review and approve in June. The next step in our budget process timeline includes the public hearing that's set for June the eighth. And the adoption of the twenty-twenty-one budget at the June fifteenth board meeting. And then in June, we'll also be bringing forward for board consideration, the final budget amendment. As well as the fund balance resolution for the upcoming year. And then the final thing that I'll say is the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District is expected to submit the certified property value roll for tax year twenty-twenty in July. Those values will also be reported to T E A, and they'll calculate the official tax rate compressing calculations. So we'll be awaiting that to have that final point of view on how our overall property tax values will look as well as the tax rate. However, we expect that we will be below the rate that we currently are. So again, that will be based on the final preliminary roll. And then in September, we'll bring forward the resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty tax rate based on those final certified values. And that concludes the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. We appreciate the presentation. Uh, first, this evening, we'll have Mr. Jim Rice has a question or two. Go ahead, Mr. Rice, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Glenn, thank you very much for this presentation. It, it's taken me, it took me nine years to figure out the public school finance up until House Bill Three. And I'm really glad you're there now because I have to figure it out all over again, and you seem to have a pretty good grasp of it. So I'll be, I'll be picking your brain in the future. I want to start out by saying, when I got on the school board in two thousand and ten. You saw the slides that Mr. Glenn had, uh, that identified where our property values were, and they were in the negative realm. And we had a twenty-eight-million-dollar shortfall from the state of Texas. From the state's share of our revenue. And we laid off four-hundred teachers. So, uh, and at the time. People would come up to me and, and ask me, Jim, oh my gosh, why are you laying off all these teachers? Well, we've got a twenty-eight-million-dollar shortfall. And they asked me, can't we have a bake sale or can't we have a car wash? And I said, yes, we can, but let's put it in perspective because at that time, our electric bill for the entire school district. Was fifteen-million dollars a year. And I said, so if we turn off the lights and air conditioning of every facility that we own for a full year. We'd still be thirteen-million dollars in the hole. So a bake sale and a car wash aren't going to help. And those are some very difficult times, and we went through a lot of budget cuts then. It was very painful. Which is why I made it my mission to understand how public school finance worked. And I get to chance to figure it out all over again. But I want to say that. We know our teachers are working hard, especially when they're teaching their class at home and then, uh, taking care of their own children. And then helping their own children with their homework. And they're long days, and, and I know that. And I agree with you, Dr. Dupree, that, uh, if we could give the teachers a raise, we would. Uh, and in the past, when our property growth has been high, we have given raises, and we've tried to remain very competitive. But it's really important for us. To adopt a conservative. An aggressive conservative stance going forward to make sure that we don't have to cut any staff going forward. So right now, it is difficult. And no one's had to take a pay cut. Everybody still has benefits and group health insurance. And there are a lot of folks who don't have that. So I also want to point out that. I think it was in, well, it was probably four years ago. When the state doesn't have the money, they're not going to pay. And at the time, they were looking at all of the fund balances of every school district in this state. Which collectively adds up to quite a bit. And they wanted us to use up our fund balance to help balance their budget. But once that money's gone, it's gone. It's taken us sixty years to get to where we are now. And if we overspend, it will be gone. It'll be another sixty years if we're lucky before we get it back. And Mr. Glenn, I, I do understand that with House Bill Three. The tax rate has been compressed. And we do have a two-and-a-half percent cap. I guess I didn't realize that went into effect next year. I thought it went into effect in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. And so your slide showed our revenue the same. But that can only occur if the state makes up the difference. That's what House Bill Three did. And the legislature knows they built a house of cards with House Bill Three. Again, if the state doesn't have the money. They're constitutionally prohibited from, they, they must pass a balanced budget, just like we must pass a balanced budget. If they don't have the money, they're not going to pay, and we're going to have to fend for ourselves. And so I think that the budget that you have proposed. And the strategic initiatives that you have proposed resonate with me. Because we do have a good team of teachers and staff. Uh, and it takes every single one of us to make this school district grow. And to go forward, and I want to hold on to every single person. The state's revenue primarily comes from sales tax. And then oil and gas contribute to that. But it's going to be down. And although we've had property tax growth of a billion dollars this last year, now we're at forty, forty, almost forty-five-billion dollars of appraised value in, in our CAT appraisal district. Next year, you can expect a lot more tax protests. Especially if the retail establishments are out of business, and we have a dark, empty shell. And those folks are always making run at the state to exempt themselves from, or to cut their taxes quite a bit. And, uh, we can only forget that at our own risk. So what you have done is, uh. I think, uh, put together a good plan. To protect our teachers, our staff, our administrators, every single person employed by Fort Bend ISD so that we can live to fight another day. I also want to make one comment, and I'm in full support of it, Mr. Glenn, and I want to make another comment. On, uh, the district's management of our debt service. And the use and the strategic refunding of existing bonds. And using the variable rate and, uh. The, uh, oh, the. Commercial paper to help manage the debt, which has resulted in savings and. Uh, also resulted in us having a Fitch and Standard and Poor's double-A plus, which I always compare that to battery acid. It's as strong as battery acid. So, uh, I always had a high level of confidence and trust in your predecessor, Mr. Steve Bassett. And I've come to have that same high level of confidence and trust in you, Mr. Glenn. We have eleven-thousand people. Their lives are really resting on your shoulders in terms of the budget. And so, uh, I'm very pleased with your attention to detail. And going through a budget as large as, as ours in short order and explaining it. And, uh, I'll, I'll stop there now, except to say, uh, very good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to say that, you know, I appreciate the, the accolades, but I do want to say that there is a very dedicated staff. Behind me that support me in every way, and without them, this would not be possible. So as you thank them, I'll make sure that they're made aware of that as well. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I, I know, and Kelly Schlaggs, I've known her since two thousand and ten, and please, uh. I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned her name. I don't know everyone on your staff, but please give a shout out to them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We appreciate your comments. Um, next, Mrs. Grail James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and uh thank you um Mr. Gwen and Ms. Saivedra for a very nice presentation. Um I have a couple of comments and I'll just pick up where Mr. Rice left off and then I do have a couple of questions as well. So one thing I'd just like to reiterate um what Ms. Bryce said about um staffing and staff and layoffs and and uh what has happened in the past. And I think it's really important that we learn from the past. Uh I was new on the school board in 2012 and we were still dealing with the ramifications of the slowdown of the economy and uh the staffing um the staffing of the district and the pay of our teachers and staff. So um I think while it is difficult to say, we're not going to give raises this year, we're not going to have step increases, it's necessary and it's a it's a difficult um it's a difficult thing to say when we know that our teachers particularly are working so, so hard. So um I want to acknowledge that and I appreciate um I really appreciate all the work that the teachers and the staff have been doing. Um and I think um that uh Brian, Mr. Gwen is correct when he says we have to be careful going forward. We don't, and and Dr. Dupree said this also, we don't want to overextend ourselves now and have a difficult situation in the future. So I think it's very important that we um operate in a very conservative way. I I had a couple of questions. One is uh having to do with our um our current budget. And I think you said this, uh Mr. Gwen, but I almost want to clarify, we show a revenue increase um uh or an increase uh, an increase in revenue um that was, I guess, unexpected or unbudgeted for of around $8 million. And is that, that was a one-time um? Did you attribute that to a one-time payment, a Harvey um Harvey payment or some other one-time event? Or is that an ongoing event? That's my question.
It is a combination of both. So there is a portion of that increase and I'll have to get you the specifics that was related to the additional property value growth and that would be recurring. However, there were, yes, a number of one-time revenues in there, including the Harvey reimbursements and insurance proceeds that will be one-time in nature and not continuing.
Okay, so we shouldn't expect this type of, I guess what I'm getting at is we shouldn't expect this type of revenue growth ba- um next year. And and I think as you've discussed, we're we're um we're planning in such a way that, based on your budget assumptions, that we we're planning conservatively and I and and going forward, but we we shouldn't expect the growth that we'd seen in the past.
And I would say, yes, that is correct. Now, I will mention that we are still awaiting the outcome of the final certified value. And again, we went very conservative, which we do by nature to ensure that we don't overextend ourselves. But if the valuation does come in higher than the seven percent and it is likely that it could, that additional funding would go to the bottom line, as Dr. Dupree mentioned, and be available for our economic stabilization. So do we expect additional revenue? Not uh like with the insurance proceeds, not the one-time items, but we could see additional property value growth depending on the outcome of the final certified roll.
Okay, thank you very much for for that clarification. Um then my next question is um with regard to the committed fund balance. So that's a separate fund than the 90-day fund balance that we're talking about. Is that, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly? It's not part of the 90 days.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So it is over and above the 90 days, meaning that we can spend that money down and it does not impact our 90-day fund balance reserve. It is over and above that amount.
Okay, and that's great. And did I understand the effort, the goal essentially of next year's budget is to increase the economic stabilization fund um significantly. And I think the numbers looked like you were almost trying to double it um to prepare us for the expected shortfall uh in the following year.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so uh, all right, so that's great. Thank you for that. And then I also noticed um the in the budget assumptions, the projected enrollment um numbers, we were using the moderate growth. Um is that correct? You, did you say we were using the moderate growth numbers?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that is correct. So we use the moderate growth and for the upcoming school year as well as in the 2223 timeframe as well. So all years are using the moderate growth scenario from our demographic.
Okay, and um so I'm just thinking about that because as I looked back in sort of a history in the 2009, 2010 time period, it looked like we had, there were less um, we had uh almost flat growth of um attendance rates or attendance in numbers. And so um I would just wondered if if we're going to be conservative, if we should consider looking at sort of some low growth numbers or you know, I don't want to say, I I'm just throwing that out there because um is we're counting on the property grow, property value growth which I guess we really are limited in counting on that to the two and a half percent. Um but if we're counting on attendance growth, then it might change our numbers a little bit. Um so I just throwing that out there. I I don't think we'll be impacted for this coming year, but maybe in the long-term projections, we should look at that a little bit.
And I will comment related to that. We did take what I would call a brute approach to looking at a worst-case scenario. And so we used a chainsaw rather than a scalpel. Uh if we were to go back, I guess what I would say is we can make those type of adjustments to enrollment. The thing that I would say is that we're currently showing the 86 days. Of course, that result would mean we would have less than 86 days, so it would drive that number down further. However, what you're describing is a very, very real possibility. And what I would emphasize again to the board is that regardless of what that number comes out to be from an enrollment perspective or from a property growth perspective, the budget that we bring forward will be balanced. So we can model that, but I would say what I would caution is that in doing so, we're making things look worse. And you know, as we put the budget together, we really want to do it around the best information available rather than speculation. And honestly, we can look back at history like we did with this, again, brute force, brute force approach. It's just going to get messier, unfortunately.
Right, and I recognize that. Um I recognize that and I'm not, you know, I think this is a good budget and it's a good plan that you've put together. I just also want to um be sure that we look at, you know, that we're realistic and that we're not uh hoping for something that we really can expect to come to fruition. And um, you know, it's I think we have to expect difficult financial times. And uh and so I want to plan for that. I don't want to put the district in a position where we didn't think about it enough, we didn't plan well enough and um and then we're, then we're, you know, we have difficulty because of it.
Right.
So um that then makes me think a little bit about the strategic priorities that Mrs. Saivedra talked about. I want to ask just a couple of quick questions about that. You uh you mentioned, I believe, that well, I'm not quite sure what I heard. At one point, I thought I heard pre-K expansion or growth. Do we expect that? And then at one point, I think I heard you say about pre-K um numbers remaining stagnant. So what is the kind of the expectation for our pre-kindergarten programs? And what, how do we expect next year to shape out?
Well, what I would say is that um we may encounter more students who qualify for full-day pre-K and we may have students who uh may have been going to private daycare that now qualify and are going to come to um full-day pre-K in Fort Bend. So um I guess the the comments that I made were, we've, we have accounted for in our budget. Should we in, you know, based on enrollment and any increase in pre-K enrollment, we have accounted for um that in our budget, should there be additional enrollment? So we do have the capacity to open new classrooms, should enrollment call for that. Um but with the the dollar amount that was in the original presentation that we shared with you in the early spring really focused more on building out um central office staff positions to assist with oversight as we continue to expand.
Okay, so that's, but thank you. That's very helpful because I I I did miss that and I appreciate you explaining that. Because I I too thought the same thing. It's, it seems likely that our, that our, those who qualify for pre-K might be growing and the 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 option of the public, um the public school pre-K program might be attractive to those who maybe have a paid childcare option at this time and they um folks are, you know, struggling with their, with their home budgets. So uh okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um and then another question I had, I didn't see it addressed. Well, I do want to thank you also for addressing the Reading Academy because I had been a little bit confused about that and you explained that very well. So I appreciate that. And I guess we should congratulate ourselves on being a provider of the Texas Reading, of the Reading Academy. And um so there you go. We might, we might have another cottage cottage business starting out, writing services to our surrounding districts.
Districts, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so that's great. So thank you for that. I agree with you also on while it's difficult to say we're not going to open the Second Early Literacy Center. I understand why you're, why you're recommending that and you have to prioritize the work and we only have so much human capacity for the staff that we have. And so I understand that and and I recognize the difficult decision. So thank you for explaining that and and for for taking that decision. My question has to do with um what might be a new strategic priority that we might have. And that has to do with um, I've heard you guys speak of it the last few weeks and that is around learning gaps that we expect to be um focusing on in this, in the fall and maybe really all through the year. Um and so I'm wondering if we need to allocate some funds um for those targeted interventions, for tutoring, for um whatever those extended learning oper- and I'm using extended learning in the wrong way, but not in the traditional way, but in a new way. I mean, whatever it is we're going to need to do to meet our students' needs. Do we need to um, do we need to, you know, set some money aside for that and um think about what's, what's the real cost of that? I don't know if any thought has been given to that. Maybe, Saive, did you have any comment on that?
Well, what I would say that there's multiple avenues that we're using to address um the learning gaps that may present themselves. Um, you know, something that we've always done within our organization is we've always planned for intervention. Um and so when we think about all of the different possibilities um as we plan for either coming back face-to-face, as we plan for maybe 100% online or as we plan for a hybrid, uh we're looking at a number of different options. Our primary option and our foundational option is to really dig into the curriculum and look at um the data that we have before us to determine what we need to do with the curriculum so that that is our first line of defense. Um and so we've already got money budgeted on work for the curriculum, but the work for the curriculum may shift to um compacting the curriculum, um differentiating the timelines, making sure that we um thread uh and reinforce um major learning um teaks uh that we may have missed during this la- last um go around uh for the school year. And so those are things that we're looking at. We're also looking at how the calendar will present itself and what ways we can utilize staff in in different ways. And so um as we go through and further develop our instructional plan, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, and we look at the reallocation of staff, we look at how we'll be looking at our curriculum, then we can determine and make sure that we've strategically utilized all of the things that we currently have in place and then determine what gap remains so that we can see if there's additional funding that will be required there. Um and so we're trying to be strategic about about everything. Um I don't have a a committed dollar amount of what that might look like. Um I do know that um there may be funds that come to us via the federal or state and we'll be applying for any grant funding that's out there to assist us um in responding. Um but we may um requi- it may require additional staff, um reallocation of staff, but then also additional staff.
Okay, well, that, thank you for that answer and 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 that's um that, I appreciate that answer. Um I guess what I don't really want to avoid or what I do want to avoid is um asking our teachers and our current staff to do more and more when they already are feeling overwhelmed. Uh and especially if we're starting a new system in the, in the fall, um whatever that might look like. Uh there's a lot of stress involved in that and if we're, we just can't ask people to do more and more. And uh I want to just be sensitive to that and if we need to uh you know, if we have to shift priorities because we do need our kid, our number one thing is that our kids need to have the interventions that they need in order to uh to catch up, if if there's catching up that needs to happen. So if there's numbers around that and we have to make some, if we have to shift to some priorities, then then I think that that's really important. That's more important than starting something new, in my opinion. So uh I do want to, I I want to bring that up. And then the last thing that I want to bring up, which is um which I'd just like some information about, um that if we consider delaying the start or the opening date of High School 12, and I recognize that that would be a very controversial um topic, but I do want to bring it up because the operations of a high school are, it's it's a significant amount to um to operate a high school. And I just would like to understand maybe some numbers around what the operating costs are. And if we were to delay it, what would it be the impact uh on the budget? And um that is my, that is the end of my comments and questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Uh Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So uh I'd like to thank Deanna and and Brian for that presentation. And um I think I, what 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 really scares me is looking at that slide, at least on mine, it's Slide 34 that shows a potential $32.5 million deficit in a couple of years. And um as as Jim discussed, because he was there, uh we we don't want to get into that situation. And uh but I am, I am a little worried. Um, you know, we've had our state shut down for a couple of months and that's wealth that has just disappeared. I mean, you don't get that back. It's gone. There are a lot of people already up in arms about their property values and whatnot. And so I'm I'm just worried about the revenues coming in for next year and following. But um So um I wanted to um I have I have one question uh for uh Mr. Gwynn. Uh you stated a little earlier ago when when I think you were uh addressing one of Grail's questions that. You you had said that if the property value is gets up to that seven point nine percent uh or higher. You said that we'll actually be able to take advantage of some of that, but doesn't the, won't our tax rate be reversed? Won't it be compressed even further as that goes up or? Will we be okay because we're still kind of being held harmless for this year? So is that is that why you said that?
So yes, sir. And if you go back to slide twenty six, or at least it's slide twenty six on mine, that shows the tier one compression with no change in funding. Essentially, the way that it will work is any value growth above the the seven percent, you are correct. Yes, we will see additional compression. However, the way that the uh House Bill two and or Senate Bill two and House Bill three are written, the state makes up that lost revenue. So um Mr. Rice very clearly made the point that if the state is not able to meet that obligation because of a downturn in the economy. That could very be well, one of the first places they go in order to adjust funding. So at this point, the way things are structured, the additional growth we would receive from the state, just not via the local tax rate.
Right.
Again, it's all predicated on the state having the funding capacity to meet that obligation.
Okay, right. So that's important because so what you and Mr. Rice said was that if. Because oil's now at twenty eight dollars a barrel. Okay, so uh remember we were warned or the comptroller was, you know, warn warn the legislature. Don't use, don't use oil to fund fund schools. And they did it. And now it's a twenty eight bucks a barrel. Okay? Plus the diminishing sales tax. Again, tho- those those taxes, they're gone. They're gone for good. That revenue is gone for good, disappeared. It's wealth that disappeared. And so it is possible that they may be able to say, yeah, well, I know we said we're gonna, we're gonna make you make you whole. But we don't have the money, so we're not going to do it. So we're gonna, you know, kind of shortchange you, you know, next year. That is, that is a possibility, right?
Yes, sir. That is very, a very real possibility.
So I want I want people to understand that because everybody that was clamoring for property caps. Thinking that this was like a really great idea. Go to, I want I want to get this the right slide here where you showed the total savings. Here it is. Mine is forty two. The total savings was forty three dollars and fifteen cents per household. And yet, that could end up just devastating the school district and result in all kinds of layoffs and everything and everything like that. For a savings, at least on the school taxes, of forty three dollars and fifteen cents. So I I I just hope people realize that, you know, because we are a, we're a people. Employer, you know, we're we're people, I don't know what, I hate to say the word industry, but you know, payroll is our biggest expense. It always has been. And people don't work for free. And people don't like to take pay cuts. Um but yet, who knows what we're going to be forced to do for forty three dollars and fifteen cents. And don't get me wrong, I you know, I I I like. Cutting taxes too. But you gotta look at the cost benefits and the benefits to society. And the other thing people might say is, well, you know, you got bloated admin. And I just want to recall that that at that workshop we had at the Congrove Elementary. A few months ago, before we were all quarantined, where that first report, uh you had showed us that our admin costs. Were point two five percent of our budget, whereas the state average was two percent. So that's huge. So we 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 don't go overboard. And and that points to, right back to what to uh. Deanna's comments a couple of minutes ago, where her first response, you notice it wasn't just, oh, well, we'll just spend more money to solve this problem. Because that's not usually our response. Our usual, our usually our response is, let's let's use resources that we have. And I mean, we've held taxes steady for a lot of years. We even cut it a couple cents. And so. You know, I I appreciate everything that that you guys are doing to to bring us conservative budgets and 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 be fiscally responsible. And and I also want to just touch, also touch base on what, you know, Charles had and mentioned. And Grail had talked about as well uh with the E L C because that the, you know, the fact that we can't open that, that is a blow because. I know everyone, every board member, I can't speak for for y'all, but I I'm pretty sure that we're all excited about seeing. Uh those increases in reading rates at the current E L C. I mean, it 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 worked. I mean, it was a program. We invested in it and it worked. And there are real results. And the fact that you're not going to be able to do that with fidelity. Because you haven't been able to find the right people or hire the right people and train the right people. It it doesn't make sense to just do it. And and I know, again, I I you know, I spoke to one of the community leaders for around an hour Saturday night and Charles and I spoke about it. For about forty five minutes today and and he really explained it to me in detail. And I I wish we could do that. I I really do. Because it worked. It's working. And um but I I just, you know, we have to do it right. And it's not going to benefit anybody. If if we don't do that and we don't go through the proper training. And I mean, we've got someone with almost three years of experience now. You know, who who really understands how to build that program. And if they don't have the time to do it because of resource issues. And um and I don't mean financial resource issues. Um then I think we just, we have to delay it as much as I hate to say that. So. Anyway, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Drew.
Thank you, President Burdine. Uh thank you, Mr. Gwynn and Ms. Psyveager for that detailed presentation. Um I only have one question and also thank you, Dr. Dupree, for um for giving us a little bit more. Details surrounding the post summit of Hunter's Glen E L C. And I really only have one question. And that is, given um the results that we have seen with the early literacy centers. Um do you think that it might at all be possible for us to implement some of those early literacy strategies? At the existing Marshall Theater Elementary?
So so I'll my answer to that is, and is, I mean, the simple answer is no. Um honestly, now Deanna might be able to elaborate on that, but the reason why, that's what I was attempting to explain earlier. Is because it's not a simple hire a teacher, send them to a training, and then they go do this. It's teachers with unique um and specialized certifications that have gone through weeks of training. And and the real, the reason the E L C is working is because it's a systemic approach. The students are getting everything from music in the, you know, classroom, every their, everything they do, their movement, their P E, their music. Their math, every aspect of their education is centered around literacy. And man and strengthening their skills and in adopting strong literacy skills early on. Now, that being said, uh Deanna, you might be able to explain this maybe better than I can. We are implementing um literacy strategies district wide. And we're certainly doing that in this feeder pattern based on need. Can you speak to that a little bit more?
Yes, sir. Um you know, we we've been employing a balanced literacy approach across the school district. And um for the last two years, we've got, we've had balanced literacy cadres where we have um teachers. Who are part of training associated with balanced literacy. And a big part of what they do is. They learn how to deliver the tier one instruction in a way where they're, they've got their small group instruction. They've got their guided reading groups. They're using the data to determine how kids are progressing as readers. They've got. Classroom libraries so that students um have a a bank of books that they can draw from to read every day. As the kids read independently, they confer uh and provide them feedback. So all of those things. Uh we're working on district wide. Um as we look at the Marshall Theater pattern. Um an option is for us to go back and look at how many of our teachers, when we look at the Marshall Theater pattern, have gone through our balanced literacy. Cadres. Um do we have um teachers um within those feeder patterns? That have gone through some of the two-year training? And how can we best leverage those teachers to continue to work with their peers? To initiate some of those same strategies so that we strengthen our um our tier one instruction. Our literacy interventionists um working with them to make sure that our interventions are implemented with fidelity. Um so there are a number of things that we can do aside from um. The model that's currently in place at Ridgemont Elementary that will continue to serve our s- our kids well. And may serve um to help us begin to bridge the gap and begin the conversation and the vocabulary, even from our professionals. That needs to be in place as we tool them and and begin to strengthen their skill set. Um looking forward.
Thank you. And I know I said I had one question, but um additionally, continue to um engage the community. Um I know that you guys have done really well at reaching out and working with the community. Um how will you continue over this sort of. Uh period where we're postponing and reevaluating and seeing what types of things we might be able to offer students?
Well, I'll speak to that simply because I was part of the discussion with the board during the board self evaluation a couple of weeks ago. And I and I would agree with you, Mrs. Drew. I think we've done a good job to this point. But I think we would all agree, we've got to continue to do better in that area. And so the plan is to continue certainly in with the group. We've had a strong planning committee in the Marshall Theater pattern that we've worked with that Dr. Rodriguez has done a great job with. Over the past year. But what we want to start doing is creating an even more, a deeper structure that's even more broadly connected into the. Broader aspects of the community, the broader, more voices, um more parents, more community members. Because we do believe it's just, it's critical at this point that we make a deep connection into the community. We've um we've been, you know, we've we keep getting into the surface level and we're doing some good work together. But I think in light of the board's new policy about true collaboration and partnership, we've we've got to go deeper. And so that's really. And what Anthony is leading now with collaborative communities and why we're building out his, you know, his, the policies in that area. The procedures in that area as well as the staff. And we're going to be doing much more work modeling some of our programming. After um districts who have deep the community outreach departments. Um so because I think in our district, a lot of our work has been around getting small groups together and talking about things just to get feedback and. To kind of get insight rather than true side by side in in the work collaboration with the community. So in the near term, we're going to keep working with the committee we've been working with because that's an important group of voices as well. We've done that, as you know, in the Willer Ridge community as well, um to plan the programming there. But in the now, over the next year or so, as we continue to develop our collaborative communities, we want to go deeper and broader with that community voice. And then, you know, and that will also come back to our work on the E L C. Because, you know, we've some of the concerns we've heard is, well, what you're doing in one feeder pattern is not necessarily a one size fits all for our feeder pattern. And that's right. So we do want to be able to launch a program. And then evaluate it year over year in partnership with the community to gauge their interest. How they see it as performing to get their enthusiasm around it, but also their feedback and voice about the best way to grow and expand it over time. So it's not coming in as a one size fits all. This is what we did here. So we're gonna just stamp it in several places in the district. It's going to be the same model. In in effect, but it might be implemented slightly differently based on the needs and desires of the local community we're serving. And that's where, back to your question, where the community engagement is going to be so critical.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. That's um I I'm glad to hear that you're going to be taking kind of a deeper dive into community engagement. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. For uh leading the effort with this community. Um thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew. Mrs. Tossin'.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Um so I I'll just piggyback on that uh while we're on the subject of the um the E I C as well as the expansion of the. I mean, the Early Literacy Center as well as the expansion of the Early Intervention Academy. I mean, I I think that this board has shown uh our dedication to these programs. By not only putting the money there, but by backing them very strongly. Um I I want to remind us all that when we first started the Early Literacy Center, we really wanted to go all in. We wanted to um start uh basically rezone some of the older kids and take the entire school. And we really wanted. To serve as many students as we possibly could, um not just students in the feeder pattern. We wanted to rededicate the whole school. And I think. Um as I think back on that, that the reason that we want to do that is because we had urgency around it. Because we we really uh bought into it, we believe in it, and the data has shown uh basically proven all of us to be right. Um all of all of the administrators who have worked on it and and all of the board members who have supported it. So. Um I will say that I agree with postponing it, but the reason I agree with postponing it is because we've learned from the past. That if we move too quickly or don't do something um thoroughly or the way it should be done, that it fails. And even with the Edge Program, which was a program we started several years ago that has been very successful in a couple of our schools. And we've expanded some of those um some some of those uh uh techniques, I guess, for lack of a better word. You know, we we went really fast with some of that and realized that we we really maybe needed to pull back and go a little bit slower. We learned the same thing in special education. Um we had to pull back and go a little bit slower. So. The last thing I want to do is to try to rush this and have it be a failure um mainly for our students. So I I recognize the the heavy lifting that has to be done to get a program like this started, how it has to be tailored to that particular. School and those particular students. And um I I just don't want us to fail. And so I recognize that we. We may need to pull back so that we get the right people in place and the right training and all of that. I also uh a- and I feel the same way about the the Early Intervention Academy. So um. You know, I just think that where we already have foundations in place, it's it's easy to to just um sort of continue what we're doing and. And go to the next grade level, but it's not easy to start a new program from the from the ground up. So I just wanted to voice my support for that. Um a- and when it comes to to teacher raises. Um I I this is particularly, I know, hard for all of us. Um this board has given. Either a raise or a step increase every year since I've been on the board. Um every budget we've ever done. Steve Bassett and you, Brian, have always brought us budgets that put our money into our students. And into our teachers. Um we've always been dedicated to doing that. Um last year, we we House Bill three. Um because of House Bill three, we were able to give a significant raise. And I think we were all, you know, happy to be able to do that for our staff and for our teachers. Like I think Dave said, we are a very um person-driven business. And it is the people who make this business. And so it's hard for us, I think, not to be able to do this. But I shared Jim's concern and Dave, and I think everybody maybe said this, but that. This a- and and as Deanna said, we're we're focusing all of our resources on preparing to help our kids who we know are going to have gaps. And I think that what we can, it it always seems to be worse than we think it's going to be. So I think we can assume that whatever we're planning or preparing for, that it has the potential to be even worse than we think it's going to be. So I think we can assume that whatever we're planning or preparing for, that it has the potential to be even worse than we think it's going to be. Um, and so what I don't want to do is get ourselves um, in trouble and not be able to retain the uh, the staff that we have, the teachers that we have. In my mind, this is a way of protecting uh, the jobs of those who are currently employed in Port NISD. And we have a duty and an obligation to protect those jobs. Um, we do not want to have layoffs. Um, we do not want to, to even have the, the, that conversation. And so if we have to take a year, and because of something like a pandemic that we could not have foreseen, um, if we have to, have to take a year and say, we, we just can't do it this year. It is to protect those jobs, a- and that's the way I view it. Um, I agree that um, we talked about House Bill Three as a board several times being a I mean, it's, it's not, it's a house of cards, like Jim says, it's not funded. Where the is going to come from, and now that the state's going to take a huge hit, not only in sales tax, but in, in oil revenue. Uh, the likelihood that they're going to be able to make up, you know, hold us harmless like they promised. Um, it is, I mean, I think it's a high likelihood that they won't be able to do that, which means we may see even bigger um, gaps than we think. Uh, so from my position, whatever we can do to protect the staff and the teachers that we currently have, I think we have to take those steps. And if that means um, you know, n- not cancelling step increases or abolishing them, but um, but just foregoing that for this, for this particular year, so that we maybe can come back stronger next year and do something. Uh, then, so, so that's my view on that, um. I um, I appreciated Allison's question just now, I know that when we started the Early Literacy Center a couple of years ago, we asked a lot of these literacy questions to make sure we were implementing those strategies in other uh, other schools, and so um, I, I think it's good that we're doing that, and I think it's a good idea if you guys would ensure that we're doing that, especially since we, we may not be able to prop up the um, Hodges Bend ELC this coming year. Um, Brian, I wanted to confirm with you. I, I thought I heard you say that, you know, we already approved those positions for those programs. And um, I thought I heard you say that we should keep those positions approved at this time, but they are not included in the budget, is that correct?
Brian?
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so they're not reflected in our budget, but those at least have been approved so that as soon as we're ready to go ahead and start hiring. Um, do we expect that to be included in next year's budget? Or how, how is staff going to have, I, I want to make sure that we have everything in place to start hiring, if we're going to delay that in the next school year. Do you have to come back and amend the budget with that, how is that going to work?
So if we move forward with the positions next fiscal year, meaning the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, because the positions are authorized, what we would do is include the funding for those positions in the budget so we can begin the process of moving forward with the hiring, as you mentioned. What I would say, and, and Deanna may want to chime in here, is that because the majority of these programs are going to require implementation at the start of the school year, we can't do them mid-year. The likelihood, even if we found funding this year, of moving forward with the hires is probably pretty low, but I'll let Deanna speak specifically to that. Because like I said, I believe most of those positions would require a full year of implementation rather than partial year.
Well, we would go through the normal hiring cycle. Um, their contract would start sooner than um, teacher, the teachers who, uh, than the normal contract teacher. So that would be the only difference. In addition, um, as I said before, we currently um, have a planning grant in place for the Hunter's Glen ELC, which has been extended. And um, we will be planning for, I mean, we will be submitting um, an application for a longer-term grant to also um, assist with, with, with some of that. Uh, but in terms of the staff that's already approved, um, once the hiring cycle begins, we'll get them on staff. Um, in the next budget cycle, their training would just, just start sooner. Um, and their contract would start sooner than um, the one hundred and eighty-seven day contract for all other teachers.
Okay, okay, thank you guys for answering that, I do want to make sure, I, I appreciated Charles's response that we're going to continue being collaborative with not only the Marshall community, but really with all of our communities as we're starting these programs, I think, I do think that that is and, and I want us to have the tools and the resources that we need to move forward as soon as, as soon as possible. Um, you know, these, these were strategic priorities for a reason. We were, the board was very specific about it, and um, and so these are things, you know, that, that are important to us, but I absolutely appreciate that given, given the times that we're going to have to, um, you know, we may just have to go a little bit slower in order to be able to focus on, on our students' needs, and our students' needs are going to be broad this coming year. Um, so with that, I just want to say um, thanks to Brian and Deanna, thanks to your teams. I, like Brian said, I know you have uh, really deep teams who support you guys in these presentations and put these numbers together. Um, are, I've always been very proud of the conservative nature of our budget while at the same time ensuring that we're funding um, priorities. We're funding student priorities that are student-centered and ensuring that our teachers um, have everything that they need to the greatest extent possible, so thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan, once again, thank you, Mr. Gwen, uh, for bringing us the presentation this evening, and thank you to all the staff and all the teachers for all that you do. Um, there was lots of great comments and questions tonight, and I couldn't agree more with my fellow board members, so. Um, with that being said, let's move along to our COVID nineteen response update, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, sir, so we have um, two topics on the COVID nineteen response tonight. I'll introduce the first one. And I'm going to ask Melissa Hubbard, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, to talk about year-end issues, because one of the timely issues right now is we've spoke a little bit to the board last week. Is our grading system, and we've talked a little bit about student interventions and those kinds of things, so she's going to speak to that. Um, the topic I, I needed to address with the board, actually, let's do this, Melissa, why don't you go ahead and go first on yours, that would be more of an update, and then we can, then I can move on to mine.
Okay, sure, um, Mr. Roger, if you will, um, bring up the PowerPoint. Um, and go to slide two, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, so um, good evening, Dr. Dupree, President Burden, and members of the board. Um, as the teachers, administrators, and parents are kind of in the home stretch for instruction this year, I'm going to spend just a few moments describing the processes and the structures that the district is taking to support promotion and retention decisions as a result of the shift to online instruction and monitoring student learning in the online environment. So in April, the district administration brought to the Board of Trustees a resolution regarding the grading practices for Term Four, and the district has implemented a system to report student proficiency on identified priority standards as met standard or did not meet standard at the end of Term Four. After the initial reporting um, with progress reports that has occurred, we developed and released some professional learning to teachers and campus administrators on calibrating those marks across the district. So we are um, we've been providing that to teachers and administrators. The next step in the work of the design team was to determine the promotion and the retention structures based on final course grades and Term Four outcomes for students. Um, throughout the process of designing those structures, we have referenced policies EIA and EIE. Specific guidance regarding the criteria for promotion outlined in policy EIE was used to define this process that we're going to talk to you about today. Next slide, please. So when we're considering promotion and retention conversations for this school year, we have considered the various factors um, as we have shifted to online instruction. So one group of students that I'm going to address right now are students that did not achieve final course grade requirements as written in policy using the calculations that we discussed in the board meeting last month. So that being said, this is the group of students who um, would not have a final course grade of seventy or higher when we look at one, two, and three. And so what you'll notice on this slide is um, these are our current practices that are aligned to policy EIE, and we will continue with these. So if a student does not meet the final grade requirements, the district will follow those processes. Elementary students will be evaluated using various performance data indicators, a bunch of data looking at the student holistically, and the campus will determine the placement. In secondary, students will engage in summer school to promote or to earn credit through an online summer school opportunity. And so this slide just describes those students who would not meet the final course grade requirements. Now, we're going to discuss a different group of students, and these are the students who would have met a final course grade requirements with a grade of seventy or higher, but did not meet standard in Term Four. So let's look at the next slide. What I'd like to highlight here is that we're using a differentiated approach for our students um, that did not meet standard for Term Four based on elementary, middle, and high school. So what you'll notice on this screen, and I'm going to go into greater detail um, by level here in just a moment. But we're going to be um, forming a Student Progress Review Committee to look at um, our elementary students from a holistic perspective. Um, we'll be looking at various data points to determine what is best for that student moving forward. And then work as a committee and using that data to implement a support plan that's very targeted. In middle school and high school, we've added an additional layer so that we can really look at proficiency of Term Four content. We also know that at the middle school and high school level, we have some students who may not be engaging consistently. And this um, Term Four assessment would uh, give students an opportunity to demonstrate their proficiency of those selected um, priority standards for Term Four before we make a determination on what is next. Um, so I want to emphasize that that layer is, would only be for students who met the um, final grade requirements of seventy or higher, but did not meet standard for Term Four. So now I'm going to go to the next slide so we can get into some specifics related to each grade level. So what we've noticed here in this particular flow chart is that we'll be looking at each student. If they have met the seventy or higher and met standard for T four, then we're moving forward. If we meet both of those criteria, then we have to ask ourselves another question. Did that student's final course grade for the year, was it greater than or equal to seventy? If it is not, um, then we will need to maybe do some additional support for that, for those students, because that would mean that they have some missed content for um, Terms One through Three and Term Four. Um, in this situation, our um, Student Progress Review Committee would design a targeted intervention plan that may include some intensive summer support, but also ongoing instructional support for the next school year. For our students who have met the final course grade of seventy or higher, um, but did not meet standard for T four, we would still go to a Progress Review Committee, and we would review additional data. But the intervention plan or the support that is provided to those students might not be as intensive as what might be needed for our students who did not meet the grade level expectations or um, the Term Four met standard expectation. In all of these scenarios, what you will notice is that for um, our special education students, our student service under five oh four, and our English language learners, we will be um, including the R five oh four committees or representative from the LPAC in order to make these intervention plans for the students so that it's aligned with the other supports that they are receiving through those services. So now we're going to move on to middle school, and this is a little bit different structure than what we're doing in elementary. So if we, thank you. So in this situation, you'll notice the same structure here at the top, uh, where we're looking at students. Did they meet um, the course grade requirement, and did they meet standard for T four? If it's a yes, then we move forward. If it is a no, then we look at that course grade. Here's where we're looking at the alignment to policy EIE. So if the student did not pass in Terms One through Three and did not um, meet standard in Term Four, they would be attending an online summer school, just as they would attend summer school according to our current policy. If the student did, um, they did not meet standard for T four, but they did have a final course grade of seventy or higher, then we would be having that group of students only take an online T four content assessment to see if they have proficiency of the standards. If they do, then we're moving forward. If not, in middle school, our Student Progress Review Committee would convene, look at multiple data points, and then determine what the best intervention or support plan might be for next school year. Again, the same qualifications would hold true for our students who are served under Special Education five oh four or receive um, um, language accommodations. Um, last, we will focus on high school. You'll notice that high school has a similar structure as middle school, once we get to that slide. Thank you. So in this situation, you'll notice that us, that we have a similar flow of information here for our students who do not meet the seventy, and they do not meet the standard for T four. If we have a no in both of those categories, then the student would attend summer school in order to gain credit for the course. Similar structure to the middle school in that we would have an opportunity for students to demonstrate proficiency through a T four content assessment, and this is not all students, this is just the students who had a seventy or higher for Term One, Two, and Three, but did not meet standard in Term Four. In this situation, if the student passes that online content assessment, then no further action is needed. If they do not, then we would have a self-paced online module that's specific to those T four, because we want to ensure that our high school students have seen the content in order to gain the credit. And that's where we have a little bit of a variance between our elementary and middle school students, we have a little bit more flexibility than in high school where we have to issue credit based on mastery of the T. So um, the last kind of decision So the last kind of decision point, and I'm going to turn this over to Rhonda Mason, is to the reporting that will be done on conduct. And then I will go over our next steps as a district to support our campuses and implementing this. Rhonda?
Thank you, Melissa. Good evening. I'm Rhonda Mason, Executive Director with the Department of School Leadership. On Thursday, May 7th, I led a meeting with a committee that consisted of representatives from the Department of School Leadership, Teaching and Learning, Social Emotional Learning, and Student Information Systems to discuss conduct grades for term four. We concluded with a recommendation to omit conduct grades for term four from report cards this year. The committee's decision was based on the fact that teachers and campus leaders were initially focused on acclimating students and parents to the online learning environment, our students' emotional well-being, and are now focused on monitoring students' engagement and progress on focus skills. Also, issues with student conduct have been minimal, and in cases where there is a concern, teachers are able to reach out to parents. Moving forward, the design team will revisit the requirement for conduct grades as we plan for a possible online or hybrid model in the fall, as some of the criteria for determining conduct grades may need to be clarified or adjusted for a virtual environment. Now I'll pass it back to you, Melissa.
Thank you, Rhonda. So Gary, if you can go to our next slide, I'm going to kind of describe our next steps in supporting our campuses in being able to implement these practices. So we've talked about how in the elementary and middle, the campuses would be able to create what we're calling a student progress review committee. And so we have a small group of cross-division team, as well as a couple of principals on that team designing the structures and the protocols that all campuses would be using. This would also include specific communication supports that the campus would be able to use when communicating to the parents. So we have some consistent messaging, as well as principal training this week through our town hall where we will be able to go over these process still. As we are also working collaboratively, because we're talking to principals and really talking to parents for the support our students might need, might not, but they might be supports that they need for their social emotional learning and their behavior. So in some of the supports that we'll be providing to the campuses, we will have options that are specific for instructional supports that can be built into those targeted plans, as well as supports for the social emotional learning and the behavior components that a student might need to help them be successful next year. And then we're working, the campuses then will work through this process to develop individualized and targeted student plans. Lastly, and we were just talking a moment ago about the teachers and the work that they're doing to support and the hard work that everybody is doing. So the term for assessment that I was just referencing, the Teaching and Learning Department is working with some targeted, some teachers who will help to design those. But the Teaching and Learning Division will be providing those to teachers. This is not something that they would be creating. And we're trying to create it in a format that allows for quick, kind of quick scoring so that we're able to get that data from the students who have to take it. And then the Teaching and Learning Department is also creating the content modules for term four for any of our high school students that might need to engage in that learning. So that would be designed at the, from Teaching and Learning, and that would not be something that the teachers would have to create. And so this is kind of our next steps and the things that we're going to be rolling out this week to campus principals to kind of close out this school year.
Is that good?
That's good. Any questions? Or Dr. Dupree, send it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that update, and it was, it was a little bit in the weeds for the board, but I know you're going to get questions about some of this and emails in the community, because this is a big topic, and it's the most timely thing we're dealing with right now is wrapping up this school year and having these challenging conversations. So I appreciate your attention to that. So another year-end matter that we need to make a big decision on is where I wanted to have a conversation with the board tonight has to do with graduation. So you know, graduation is a culminating event for our seniors after thirteen years of education in our system. It's a very important thing. It's important to the board. You all invest three days of your life in graduation each and every year. And I didn't, and I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to kind of give us some feedback about how to proceed. So briefly, overall, the Governor Abbott has cleared the way for us to begin having graduations, gathering for graduations outdoors only as of May 29th. Our graduations were previously scheduled to begin, I believe, on May the 28th. We've, you know, we have, we already have plans. We have Smart Financial Center reserved for July 19th through the 21st to do our usual graduation program. But as you know, there's many uncertainties. And so I committed that we would give a full evaluation to the idea of outdoor graduations in earlier June, rather than asking our families and our seniors to wait until later in July. So since last week when the announcement was made, we have studied three venues, the City of Sugar Land Festival site, Constellation Field, and our own Hall Stadium. Staff believes if we're going to do a graduation outside Hall Stadium is the way to go, because it has ninety-two hundred seats available for the audience, which allows for plenty of social distancing. And the entire class, our largest graduating class, will be able to sit on the field also properly distanced with space between their chairs with a large stage and screen on the football field. So if we do move outside, we want, we believe Hall Stadium is the way to go. Of course, that also saves a significant amount of money, because it's a venue we already own. We don't have to rent anything other than some of the equipment, the screens, and those kinds of things. Now, there is a big if. We had a, we convened our focus groups that included parents and students from each campus. The interesting thing about the focus group meeting is that parents said they wanted to do what the kids, whatever the kids wanted. The kids said that what they wanted to do, whatever the parents wanted. And so there was not a firm, a definitive, "We want to do it in July," or a definitive, "We want to do it sooner." There were definitely pros and cons presented around both, including items like travel has been arranged for family members who may be coming to graduation. Families are planning trips and vacations in June and July. But the, but the theme with the recurring theme was if you're going to do it, do it now and make it known and get the new date scheduled so that we can plan. As a leadership team, we really spent some time hashing this out. We look at our priorities as being, bringing closure for the class of 2020 as soon as possible. And that means trying to, being able to honor our graduates before they begin going into the military, away to college, or other post-high school opportunities in late June and July. That was a high priority as a leadership team considered the possibilities. We also considered public health. You know, outdoors is open air, properly spaced, is probably the safest environment for any sort of gathering we're going to have at this point in time. There's also significant uncertainty about what can and would happen in July, to be honest, because we don't know where the virus is going, and we're, we have concerns that we may not be able to gather in July. And even if we can, the capacity we would be able to bring to the building might be so low, it would be very exclusive as to who could even attend outside of the actual graduates. So that was a high priority as we thought about it. And then the other thing we considered is opportunities for extended family to attend. Now, we believe, though, even if we do this outside at Hall, tickets would be limited to four per graduate to allow plenty of space. Now, again, that could be flexible. Our smaller classes that have maybe two fifty to three hundred might be allowed five or six tickets. But for some of our larger schools with five and six hundred students, we would need to stick with fewer with four to be able to allow for plenty of space. The, the big risk in all of this is heat, weather, hurricanes, rain. And so what we're, you know, we thought if we did it, we would probably want to do an early morning ceremony at eight AM to take advantage of the morning coolness, and an eight PM to take advantage of the evening coolness, or maybe seven thirty, depending on when sun town is. But we wanted to, we would want to do it in June to take advantage of the cooler weather than July. And maybe on one day, we could do a one, a third ceremony. But we believe we would need to do probably at least five or six days, two per day, to get them all in with proper management. We also think we could mitigate some of the risk of weather by, because we can't have an indoor backup plan, a rain plan, but we could announce when a rain date would be, when the rain dates are for each campus. So if one is rained out, they know already when their rain date is without having to, to work on that if should something be canceled. So that, that's what we're looking at, all the items we're looking at. I wanted to get the board to be, have a chance to weigh in, give us your thoughts before we make a final decision and announce that later this week. We're looking, we haven't identified specific dates in June, but we are thinking definitely within the first to second week of June is when we would want to be able to do this. So I will turn it over to the board for questions, feedback, remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. So we'll start with Mrs. Kristen Tosin, and then we're going to go to Mrs. Helliger. So go ahead, Kristen, when you're ready.
Okay, thanks, Jason. So I have a few questions before I, before I guess I weigh in. You know, having a senior, this is something that's been on my mind quite a bit, and of course, has been talked about quite a bit in my house and among several seniors and senior families. So my first question is, if we don't have the graduation in Smart Financial, will they be refunding the money or what's going to happen there?
Veronica, do you have any response to that based on your work with the contract or, or Rob?
So we've given Smart Financial a heads up that this is a conversation, but we haven't talked through what the cancellation fees or penalties would be. I believe Rob is looking at the contract now, and he has asked us to wait until we have a better understanding of what all, all the fees could be as, as we're discussing it. So Rob has had a chance to, I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it, but he is aware in that we are reviewing it, because there could be some penalties associated with it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, we have looked at it, and we've sort of anticipate that we'll have the discussion following, when we have this discussion with the board. I anticipate what many of these venues do will want to carry monies forward for a future year. So I would not anticipate an immediate refund.
That's a question we need answered. I mean, we, we can't have this conversation if we don't have that question answered. And our contract should govern, and so we should know what the contract says, or, or we're having discussions with them about waiving fees and allowing for those funds to be used in a subsequent year. So I, I think that's a question that the board needs answered. I mean, that's, that's a funding question, so that, I'm going to leave that one out there, and I'd like to get a response to it. My other question is, is, I mean, we're required to social distance, so how do we plan to social distance in Smart Financial? I mean, we cram those kids on a stage like cattle, so that's really one of my concerns. So how are we going to handle that?
Well, I will tell you, that has been, the presumption to this point has been if we do Smart Financial in July, that we're going to be cleared together, which is the, the risk in all of this is I don't think anyone is believing that's going to be the case even by July.
Right.
So we've talked about opportunities like closing down most of the venue and allowing seniors to take seats in the auditorium properly distanced, which, which limits, significantly limits audience. So that's why we're, that's one of the reasons we're thinking it might be better to move on.
Okay. So right now, okay, I'm just gonna, I'll move on. So you think the new dates would be sometime during the first or second week of July, I mean, of June, if we did an outside, earlier graduation?
Yes, we'd want to do it as soon as possible. We just want to allow adequate time to plan it so it goes smoothly.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and weigh in. I, and Charles and I talked about this earlier this week, because I've had some, you know, some, a little bit of angst over it. I'm one of those who believes that there's probably a strong likelihood that we won't be able to gather in July, at least not to the extent that we have to gather to have a graduation in Smart Financial. If there are still distancing requirements being put out by the governor or by TEA, then we will have waited and assumed this whole time instead of trying to negotiate our way through this contract sooner rather than later. I feel like if we say now that we're going to go a different direction, it gives us a better position to go to Smart Financial and say, "Look, can you, can you move this forward for us next year?" I mean, events are being canceled. That's the reality of this pandemic. The second thing it gets us, so, so the first thing it gets us is a guaranteed graduation of some sort now as opposed to later in a venue that may not allow for it at all. The second thing it gets us is we, we can honor students who, I, I have a nephew who's going into the Air Force, and he's leaving in June. And I think there are other students who will be leaving in June and won't be able to make a July graduation. So I guess I'm generally of the opinion that sooner is better than later, even, I mean, I've had, we've made some plans in our family as well around the July dates, but I feel like sooner is, is better than later. I think having virtually no audience in Smart Financial to try to socially distance the students is not, is not a good scenario. I think risking a virtual graduation is really not a good scenario. I think, I really feel like having something outdoors where we can control it, and even if we have to limit tickets and distance the kids and distance the audience, just seems like a better, it just seems like a better plan in, in my mind as a parent and as a, as a trustee, trying to ensure that all these kids get to have a graduation to the extent that we can provide it. Having it over five or six days, having rain dates, I mean, I graduated on a football field. So I think a lot of us graduated on football fields. That's the way we used to do it. And if it rained, we had a rain date, and we just dealt with it. So I, you know, there are lots of, of schools in Texas that still graduate on football fields. And so I, I feel like it's a perfectly acceptable option for us, and I, I think it gets us from a public health perspective. It's, I feel more comfortable with my student and my family being outside socially distanced than crammed into a, a stage or into a hall where, you know, I mean, I don't know how many parents are going to feel comfortable at that point sending their kids. I just don't know where we'll be then. So there's, there's a lot of uncertainty around it for me, and I tend to want to go with something that's a little more certain, a little more controlled, and maybe, maybe even a little safer at this point. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Appreciate your comments. Mrs. Helliger?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to the presentation prior to Dr. Dupree talking about graduation. Because that was, was that Melissa?
Yes.
Yes, hi, Melissa. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Yes, hi Melissa. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions for you. So who's, who's man, who's mandating the assessment that's needed for T four? Um, and then how do we ensure that the assessment that's done is equitable throughout the district? That's my first question.
Okay. And so we're only going to give the assessment to students who, um, who have the seventy or higher for the, um, for their T one, T two and T three. And who are not meeting standard on their T four content. We're trying to give the students another opportunity to show their teacher that they know the standards. Like I know proficiency. I might not have done all of the work during T four, but it's another chance to demonstrate that proficiency. Um, in terms of who, um, the set, your second question was who is, um, determining equity? So those assessments are going to be designed, um, at the district level and provided to the teachers with a certain cut score. So all of the, all of the students would, um, that there wouldn't be subjectivity there in determining the score.
So I get, I get that. So but so does that mean that if there's no subjectivity with determining the score, does that mean that there's no subjectivity right now with what's being taught at, in T four?
Um, it's just a way of us determining really quickly there at the end if the kids had demonstrated proficiency via an assessment. And then if they can, then we can mark them as met standard.
But you know, but do you understand where I'm, I'm getting at with this?
Um, I'm not sure.
So right, so, so everybody's kind of been, I guess using the teaks and, and doing different things in the classroom, right? Um, classes being taught differently for the same class throughout the district. Um, so when it comes to this assessment, we're going to have a, um, uh, assessment that everyone has to meet. So my question is, how do we ensure that it's equitable? When everyone's had a variety and diverse ways of teaching it, or I'm not sure if everyone taught the same material. I mean, I just, I'm not totally clear with that. So that's kind of my concern with that. And then to add on to that question, um, if, if our students are having issues in T four, um, I mean, I know there's some, some students are just killing it and they're, they're doing really, really well. And then you have some students that are not. And so I'm, I'm really talking about the kids that are not and who are struggling or, um, just, just the focus, this, just the, a lot about focus, I think a lot of it is, right? And so how do we tell them, okay, you didn't pass T four, so I'm going to give you another opportunity to go take this class again online. So my, I would think my results would be the same, very similar. If, if I'm giving you an opportunity now to take, take a class online, now unsuccessful. And then you say, okay, I want to make sure that you do it again. What, what are, what kind of, um, support are you going to give that student to take that class again online? For summer. So I think you said they would have to go to summer school?
Um, they'd go to summer school if they didn't pass or meet the, um, seventy or above and they didn't do the T four. Um, the online, um, for high school specifically, the online module would be just the T four content. Um, so one of the questions you asked was specific just to the, the variance that we have right now, right? Teachers providing different instruction, looking different. So the assessments will be designed based on the teaks that were identified and they'll be to the rigor of the standard. So regardless of the teacher taught, um, a topic in a different way, we'd be measuring related just to the standard. Using the online contact guides.
Well, let's, let's, let me interject something.
Sure.
Um, Ms. Heliger, I want to make sure, I think I understand what you're asking, though I, I'd like to frame it another way. What I hear you asking is if I wasn't successful now, why are you going to make me do the same thing I did before to see if I'm going to be successful this time?
Well, that, that, that's basically it. And then you're going to assess me on it. Um, well, there's two, two questions. That's, that's the latter question. Yes.
So that's, so I think what I would say, and, and Deanna, you may want to weigh in on this, is my expectation is that it's not going to be just, we're going to do it again faster and louder during summer school. It's going to be a different type of arrangement, either a small group with more direct instruction from a teacher online. Maybe a genuity delivered within a true course content, not, not the way students are getting the education they're getting right now today. Because you're exactly right, Ms. Heliger, there is a great deal of subjectivity and inconsistency throughout the system today. Even among a building, if, but certainly among our schools. And again, I'm, I'm not going to be critical of the teachers. They're doing the best they can under the circumstance. But your point is well taken. It can be okay. So you weren't successful with online learning. So here it's going to put you back online and go at it again. So that's why, that's why this, I've asked him to set up these systems to really assess what are the gaps that the students have? And how, what is the best way to remedy it? Is it a full semester of edgenuity to make sure they've mastered it? Is it T four only? Um, or is it direct face-to-face instruction? Oh, you may be online, but still not the assignments in School G and the more self-directed, but with a little more direct teacher engagement. So that's, I mean, that's, that's my expectation is that we have those systems in place. So it's not more of the same and assess the same and those things that you're asking.
Right. What, what, we would develop more synchronous opportunities for the teacher as Dr. Dupree indicated. Where there is, even though it's not face-to-face, there is more direct instruction via online. Uh, there's more check-ins, there's frequent check-ins. The teacher would be assigned a much smaller caseload to over, you know, you know, in terms of oversight. And so there's, there's other, um, factors in summer school that are not the same um, as what we, we're, we're experiencing now that we can account for, um, for our students. So there is a, a much greater level of differentiation than we can exercise right now.
All right. So that, so that, that's the latter part of the question. The latter part of the question was the initial assessment that's being done, right? So if the initial, is, if the initial assessment is objective, but right now you've got some subjectivity around what's being taught or how it's being taught or whatnot. There's a lot of subjectivity going on right now. You know, I've got, you know, you've got some teachers that are doing Zoom classes. Some teachers are not doing Zoom classes. So those students who are doing Zoom classes, maybe, maybe their class is a little bit more engaging and so the teacher, so they're able to, to get the information. Then you have those that put assignments on, um, on School G and you have students who have to kind of do their self-taught or parent-taught type of lesson. So how do we? How do we make an assessment on that?
Well, so let me, let me speak to that. And, you know, some of the educate, other educators in the room, I'll, I'll say I am an educator, not to the level of some of these folks. But here's my answer to that. It's very similar to what we do with our RIN three sixty data in, with all of our students every year. We, we give that baseline benchmark at the beginning of the year to figure out what do they know? And then we teach them, then we do a mid-year to see what progress, and then we do an end of year to see what progress. The only difference is in this case, we're using a common assessment across all of them. Because we do have to assess where they are, because we've got to take them all to the same place to mastery. And so they, because they've had a different experience, that makes the common objective assessment even more important. Because if a student has not had robust instruction and they are behind, we need to know that now. Not when we've advanced them a year and they're really struggling. So that's, so that's why the objective assessment now is even more critical because of the inconsistency that's taking place in many of the classrooms.
Okay, so, so, you know, so you, you get where I'm going with this and clearly understand my, uh, my concerns for our kids. And, uh, I, you know, when it comes to graduating, I'm going to, I'm going to take the, the, the pack, the, the board member who has a, a graduating seniors lead on this. So whatever Kristen wants, that's what I'm voting for. But I mean, it, COVID nineteen is a challenge. So, you know, even whatever we come up with, you know, we all have to make those decisions for that day. Um, when it comes to graduation. But yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Addie. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to do what the parents and students want to do. And, uh, just kidding. If we have it in June at Hall, will I have to wear a sweater?
You mean a robe?
I could wear a sweater underneath my robe.
You can.
Actually, that, it's fine with me. I, I like that idea. Like Mrs. Tosan, I graduated on football field. And, uh, let's just get it done. Thank you.
Maybe you can wear shorts under your robe, Jim.
That's an idea. Mrs. James, thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James.
Oh, my goodness. I don't think we should be talking about what we're going to wear under our robes graduation. Just saying. Uh, okay, uh, I'll weigh in on graduation. I'm, I, I share Mrs. Tosan's concern about being able to gather in large groups indoors. That seems a lot more dangerous to me based on what I know right now or what we all know right now. Being outside seems a lot safer. Um, I like the idea of some closure. Um, that being said, I think it's a tremendous amount of logistics to figure out how to get people in and out of the stadium, students in and out, set up the rules, et cetera. Um, and there was a, I don't know if anyone saw it, today's, in the written newspaper today, the Houston Chronicle, there was an editorial written by the valedictorian of Stratford High School on this very topic. And her perspective was quite mature, I thought, in that it would be very difficult to have students stay separated from one another. Um, so I guess I would just, I shared that, share those concerns and the most important thing to me, I, I want closure also, but I also want safety for staff and for students. And I don't want to, um, to cause harm. So that would be my, those are my comments on that. And you guys have to plan it all out. So uh, I appreciate that and that's a lot of work. Uh, I have one question, uh, for Mrs. Hubbard on the, um, presentation she made. And I was picking up on some of the same things that Addie was asking about. If they're not, if the students aren't being successful right now online, um, with online learning, how would we expect them to be doing online learning again and, and be successful the second round? So I heard that there were, um, going to be some different strategies in place. And that sounds good. Could you give us, um, a little more information on the, or maybe you don't know it yet, actually, now that I say this question? Who's on the Student Progress Review Committee or how is that being set up? I looked in the board policy to see who's on the grade placement committees and I'm wondering if that's how it's going to be modeled? Or if, um, and on those committees, parents have input. I don't know if the same would be true in this case, but I, I'm wondering what you guys are thinking about it.
So it would be structured similarly to what you were reading in terms of a grade placement committee. Um, what we have, um, discussed is parent involvement um, in those discussions as being optional if the parents can participate, but having them, um, informing them of when and where and collaborating with parents so that they can be part of those conversations.
Okay. Well, I think that that's really important because I also feel like there's many households have different extenuating circumstances. And as we're trying to look at this situation holistically and for the whole child, um, I just am concerned that if we have suddenly a high number of retention situations. I mean, I just, I, I, I don't want to do more harm than good, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm going for. So um, I, I think some, some, some thoughtfulness around the family situation and the family. Um, whatever the situation may be, whether they have people that are sick, whether they have multiple generations, whether there's a lot of kids. I, I don't know what all those situations are, but, but, uh, it's become clear to me, everybody has their own situation and they're all, people are doing the best they can. Uh, so I, I just want to honor that, um, as much as we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal, did you want to make a comment about graduation? You're muted.
Yes, um, yeah, I would, I would go ahead and look into the, the football field option as a, as a serious way around it. You know, I, I kind of expressed my concern about the smart financial last time when we first brought it up, you know, just, just getting in, everybody in and out over three days. I just didn't think people would feel super comfortable about that. Um, so yeah, I, I would support, um, I would support doing it outdoors. I, I also did it on the football field too. So, um, you know, whatever, whatever works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Allison Drew, did you have a comment about graduation?
Uh, thank you, President Burdine. I, I would, um, defer also to the board member that has a graduating student. Um, you know, whatever works out best for both parents and those graduating students, I think is, um, what we should be doing as a board. I would, um, ask that, um, if there is a way, um, to in any way possibly involve technology, either be a video or something for students that are not going to be able to be out on the football field, that we, um, sharpen our pencils with that and we get creative if we have to for students that cannot participate physically out on the field.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Drew. Appreciate your comment. So, um, I didn't graduate on a football field because I grew up in Texas and it's hot. And so um, I know, I know Mrs. Tosan, uh, it was probably hot when she graduated too, but.
Yeah, I was hot too, Mr. Burdine.
I'm sure it was. But, uh, with that being said, um, I don't know that there's ever going to be the right date. Uh, I, I think that the same concerns may lie in July and maybe even August about people being apprehensive. So with that being said, I think the sooner the better. Um, one is a, maybe be a little bit cooler. Um, there's some closure. I do know there are, um, I've had a few community members reach out to me saying whether or not they are, got vacations or they're even planning for the fall in July and August, um, that was a concern. So, um, you know, ultimately, I guess staff, students or, or parents for that matter, uh, they don't have to come if they're uncomfortable. And I like Allison's idea. I don't know what that may look like, but maybe using some type of technology would be helpful. I don't know. That's a, there's a lot of unknowns on that, but I am in favor of doing it outside at Hall Stadium in June. And, um, like the others said, I think for those parents who have graduating seniors, I think that, um, we should listen to some of the ideas that they may have or, or what it may be best. So with that being said, um, is that what you need, Dr. Dupree?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, it's getting very late. I know we have the emergency procurement update. May we convene in a closed session and then come back and do that update behind closed session and we'll do our consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, um, with that being said, we will, oh, before we go, um, on the agenda, I didn't say this before we started off with our updates this evening, but six A one, our GT update was pulled from this evening's agenda. We will do that in June. So I just wanted to make everyone aware, six A one was pulled. We will do that. So I just wanted to make everyone aware, six A one was pulled, we will do that in June. That is the GT update. Um, with that being said, we will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, under the following sections for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.
Mrs. Drew.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Cynthia Ward to the position of high school principal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Drew and a second by Mr. Rice. Any discussion? All right, I'm gonna call these board members' names, please say yea or nay. Um, I'm gonna go through our roll call here, uh, Mrs. Allison Drew.
I vote yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
I vote yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Kristen Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
I vote yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Mrs. Tall San.
I think Mrs. Drew had additional motions.
She does, okay, well, we'll do all Allisons and we'll go to Christas, all right. Mrs. Uh, Drew.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Jorge Pena to the position of elementary school principal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Drew and a second by Mr. Rice, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call each board member's name, please vote yea or nay. Mrs. Allison Drew.
I vote yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Krista Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Mr. Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Mrs. Drew.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Jojo Jacob to the position of Executive Director of in- information technology services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Drew and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call these board members' name, please vote yea or nay. Mrs. Allison Drew.
I vote yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristen Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Jason Burdine, yea. Motion passes. Mrs. Drew.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Prabhu Krishnan to the position of Director of Project Management.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Drew and a second by Mr. Rice, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote, I'm gonna call each board member's name, please vote yea or nay. Mrs. Allison Drew.
I vote yea.
Mrs. Grail James. Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristin Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Mr. Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Mrs. Tall San.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. I move that the Board of Trustees approve Jennifer Petru to the position of middle school principal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tall San and a second by Mr. Rice, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call these board members' name, Mrs. Allison Drew.
Yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristin Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Mr. Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Mrs. Tall San.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Jacob Nichols to the position of elementary school principal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tall San and a second by Mr. Rice, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Mrs. Allison Drew.
Yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristin Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Mr. Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Mrs. Tall San.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Angela Wallace to the position of elementary school principal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tall San and a second by Mr. Rice, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Mrs. Allison Drew.
Yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristin Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Mrs. Mr. Jason Burdine, yea, motion passes. Thank you all trustees, we will now go back to item six B three, our COVID-19 emergency procurement update, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, Brian is gonna do just a real quick update on our emergency procurement related to COVID-19, Brian.
Thank you, sir, and this will be a very brief update indeed. There have been two expenditures made to two different vendors related to the emergency procurement resolution that the board made, the total is forty-five thousand five hundred six dollars and eighty-four cents. Of that, forty-three thousand six hundred and twelve dollars was to Connected Solutions for hotspots for online learning, and one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars was to Western Psychology Services for online forums that were to allow the Special Education Department to conduct portions of the evaluations they can, they do virtually. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn, do we have any questions? All right, moving along to ten A, our activity report. Mr. Rosenthal, do you, do we have anything on the, Mr. Rose, or anything on the activity report?
Can't hear you, Dave.
Yep, I found it.
All right.
So, this past month, we have been to a board self-evaluation meeting, board workshop meeting, regular board business meeting, six annual waiver awards, Fort Bend County School District's live update, public policy committee meeting, Tazby Director Zoom meeting with Commissioner of Education Mike Marath, Fort Bend Economic Development webinar, trauma-informed care COVID-19 UC Berkeley webinar, and thank you Elkins Teacher Appreciation Drive group.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Moving along to ten B, special reports, did we have any special reports, trustees? All right, we will now consider our consent agenda. This may have, may have a motion.
Mr. Burdine, I move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety with the one exception of the GT Academy Agenda having been pulled.
We have a mo-
Excuse me, Mr. Burdine, I believe that agenda item, you have had a pulled agenda item. It's eleven A one C.
If it's a- All right. All right, my other computer just ran out of batteries, eleven A one C. All right, with that being said, Mr. Rice, may I have a motion? Including eleven A one C being removed.
Mister, Mister President, I move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety with the exception of agenda item eleven C.
A, eleven A one C.
Eleven A one C.
May I have a second? We have a motion by, are we have a, yeah, a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please vote, I'm gonna call each trustee's name, please respond, yea or nay. Mrs. Allison Drew.
Yea.
Mrs. Grail James.
Yea.
Mrs. Addie Heliger.
Yea.
Mrs. Kristin, Mrs. Kristin Tall San.
Yea.
Mr. Dave Rosenthal.
Yea.
Mr. Jim Rice.
Yea.
Jason Burdine is yea. Motion passes. We will now review our future board meeting agenda items, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, sir, it's a short list, in June, we're gonna do a, Mrs. James, the Policy Committee Chair is gonna give an update. As you noted tonight, we're also gonna do the GT update in June. The big rock for June is gonna be budget adoption. The public budget and tax rate hearing will take place on the eighth at five thirty PM, and then we're also gonna do the facilities master plan update for review and consideration in June.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you trustees.
Good night.
Good night.